November 4th, Buffalo Board of Vacation Work Session Agenda. Tonight, I have the privilege of chairing the Executive Affairs portion of the meeting. I will understand if people keep checking their phones for election results. It is a very exciting time in which we're leading or living right now. At this point, I don't know if I see the superintendent on, but I was going to either give it back to Darren or to the superintendent for the, or who's ever handling the superintendent's transitioning reopening plan update.
Dr. Cash is here, Mr. Puccucci. Before Dr. Cash, if I can remind everyone, again, there's a lot of feedback. If you can please mute if you are not talking. If you are calling in on the phone, please press the mute button on your cell phone. Thank you very much. I'll turn it over to Dr. Cash.
Okay, good evening, colleagues. Good to see you. Trust everyone is safe and well at this time. Now Darren, I am looking to see if those slides have come in to Mike Lucci so he can begin to put up the slides that I have prepared with staff for these first two committee meetings. Do you know if those are there or not?
I do not know. Mr. Puccucci, can you ask Mike if he's received those slides? Because I have not received them an email yet, Dr. Cash.
They just came through for us.
Okay. Well, they were sent all at the same time, so Mike should have them. Colleagues, while we wait for that, just to set the tone and the purpose of tonight's boardwork sessions, I want to thank Kathy Evans Brown, Dr. Brown, and Lou Puccucci for donating the time for both of their committees for us to give you this important update this afternoon. As you know, this issue of the terrible pandemic that we all are struggling with in many, many ways, psychologically, emotionally, physically, also with the need to continue to educate all of our children to a high degree of quality and give them the services that they deserve and that they need is the challenge before us this year. All of us are going through this same challenge across the country. Large district, small district, rural district, urban suburban district. So we continue to update you on how we have proceeded to plan for the return of our students. This evening, I'll go through about seven or eight slides. That's our customary approach. And within that framework, we then will have several, what I consider to be exemplar plans from schools to date. All 60 plans are now prepared. And you'll see at the end of the presentation, I'll give a link so that as board members, if you want to go into the link and see what your schools and your district represented look like, then you can do that. They're what we call working plans, so they continue to evolve and sharpen. But the ones tonight, you will see fit a template and a approach that all of us have agreed upon is a sound one. If Mike's ready, I'm ready. Lou, what did Mike say?
He's working on it right now, Dr. Cash.
Okay. Colleagues, you can begin to peruse the document in your computer. Do you have them on your computer right now?
Yes. It's a three-page document that says back to buildings checklist.
No, that's an appendix.
Okay.
We'll go over that at the end.
It's the one that says work session 11-4-20.
It's still an 11-page document.
Yeah, here it comes.
It's on the screen.
There we go.
Okay. Next slide, Mike. So colleagues, as we did about three weeks ago, we always lead with science and the status of the disease in our community. At an international level, we talk about it. At a national level, at a state level, at a county level, and at a city level. And some of these bullets that I pulled for you just updated today for your edification are here now. Today, colleagues, every nation in the world has COVID cases. Every nation. And the cases are growing faster than ever right now during these last several weeks, and particularly in the latter part of October. We're up to 47.7 million cases worldwide. 1.2 million have died from this disease. In the United States, 9.4 million known cases. And we are up to a staggering 92,660 new cases reported just yesterday. Over 30 states are reporting significant increases. We are up to 232,600 deaths from COVID-19. In Erie County, we have a significant spike in cases in just the last several weeks. The last week in particular has been puzzling, to say the least. And we are now up at a daily positivity rate of 5%. That's just breaking news today. And that puts us into the cusp of that red zone territory that the governor has talked about trying to identify districts and counties across the state that are green, yellow, and red. Also alarming to us as educators and board members and community members is the fact that children have, are seeing a rise in this disease. In the last week alone, in October, there were 61,000 new cases in children. Pediatricians are very concerned and alarmed by this because it's not just an issue of whether the child will catch this disease and die. It's the effects. Long term, we're seeing more and more, as more and more research comes out about the neurological and pulmonary effects, for example, that can, that can be long-term in children if they catch a full-on load, virus load of this, of this disease. Meanwhile, we continue to grapple with consistent, effective guidance around how to contain and bring down this rise in cases and get this disease under control. Because as you know, at the very highest levels of government, there is no policy to contain the disease. It has been stated in effect that they are seeking herd immunity, which is not scientific or not at least borne by any scientific evidence that that would be effective for us here in the United States. And so that then has a trickle-down effect where states try to fight and figure out how to contain and set guidance and policy around this issue. That has been variable and largely ineffective based on the data. And then when we get local, we find that we often run into capacity issues with the very strategies that we need the most help on. For example, surveillance testing and contact tracing. That simply is not adequate enough if every school system were to bring back all of its students and all of its staff. And then since October, the spike has been so alarmingly high throughout the country, we wonder what November and December will bring. We're talking about doubling the number now. If you recall, just a few weeks ago, on October 7th, the average daily rate of infection was 44,000 at our boardwork session. And just three weeks later, we're at 92, or an average of about 90,000 cases per day across the country. Next slide. So within that context, which will guide us, I've said all along, and I think you've agreed that we've got to be guided by the science and by what the local conditions are around this pandemic. But what we did is we tasked all of our administrators, our school-based administrators, along with our central office team, to work with their school communities and develop a plan that would support their neediest students. And the schools began to tier their students into three major groups: high need, moderate need, and lowest need. And based on a number of data.
Everywhere she has gone. Paulette, we can hear you.
Hello?
Okay.
Based on current, based on current data, survey and interview results, our school-based teams, along with their Associate for School Leadership, Associate Superintendent, worked to identify groups of students to prioritize to come back in person. And I gave them a bandwidth of up to 100 students so that it could fit onto our current footprint safely. And when I say footprint, the footprint of all 60 of our schools. Next slide. And colleagues, as I said, the school-based team, this is, it was a very democratic process. This wasn't me telling schools what, what staff or what students they should bring back. This was them working with their various reopening school teams. Some schools have three or four of these teams that they work with together. And they try to reach consensus. They reached consensus at, after looking at all of this data, of who they should bring back first and what should be that group of students. And so they use a variety of data sources. And I'll just point out here, next slide, please, what some of those data sources are. In their appendices, I've encouraged them to go ahead and put in the actual survey data or the actual cohort data, progress report data into their appendices for their plans. What you'll see at the beginning or at this part of their plans in the, in the two plans you'll see this evening is here are some of the kinds of data that they looked at. Cohort tracking of a particular graduation class, for example. If they were seniors or a high school, they start to look at the cohort for 2017 and see how they're doing at this point in the school year. A variety of progress reports, teacher recommendations, student support team tracking, intervention forums that have been developed during instruction, remote instruction, talking to students themselves, and outreach to students and families. Just a number of sources of evidence were used to determine which students were the highest need in a particular school. Next slide. Some of the key components of the plan, you'll see, colleagues, that there are about 11, 10, 11, or 12 major components, key components in each of these plans. But there are careful considerations given to the, what I call the foundational elements, the educational elements. And that's the academic considerations, social-emotional learning, and the culturally and linguistically responsive practices or instruction that is occurring. And you know, we talked about that in our last boardwork session, about the new foundation, the emerging foundation of learning. And you'll see those strong components in the plans that you'll see tonight. Next section. Next slide. Now, this in effect, colleagues, is the template, if you will. Basically, the template that all of the plans reach consensus. We all reach consensus. I've talked to principals, the associates talked to principals, cabinet meeting, work sessions have come up. And these are the sections of each plan that you'll sort of see and be able to track from the appendix, I'm sorry, from the table of contents right on through to the appendix. You can read these yourself. But these are elements that are in all of the plans. This overall school needs, I'll just make a comment about that. That was an item I wanted everyone to put in because it's important to note that in order to effectively implement these plans, there's quite a bit of need that each school has that costs money. It costs a lot of money and that wasn't always, certainly wasn't anticipated all of it, you know, pre-COVID and even during COVID. And this is what I mean when I keep saying, we don't, we have an unfunded mandate. Open schools, but there are no funds that have come to, to our large school districts that I call costs for pandemic schooling. And when you see what some of the schools have identified as school needs, we're going to do everything we can to get it for them, to get those needs met. But these are costs that were unanticipated and not all of them were budgeted for. And I've talked about this in prior work sessions with you. And then finally, you'll see an appendix section, which has a number of items in it. Certainly, the PPE information and the basic logistics of how we go about bringing students into the school, moving about the school, and dismissing at the end of the day. All of that kind of information is in the appendix. Where we go when a student is sick, where they go, who helps them, what room is available in the school to identify, take temperatures, do testing even if need be. That's all in the appendix. Next slide. So colleagues, that brings us then to at least two plans that I think are exemplary, given where they come at this point. And so we'll share those with you so you can get a feel of what these plans are. But there are many others waiting in the wings. If you want to see several more after this, we have at least three more teed up for you. So we, we can show you as many plans as you'd like this evening. But certainly, we want to start here with Highgate Heights Elementary School. And Cassandra Wright, Dr. Wright, will present that plan. And then we'll go to East Community High School. And Toya Wilson will present that school's plan.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. Thank you, Dr. Cash. I'm getting ready to share my screen now. While I'm. Hold on a moment, please. Trying to get this queued up. Can you all see that?
No.
No, we can't.
Not coming up.
Okay. Toya, maybe you can go first while I figure out what I'm doing wrong here.
It's on your, Mike is going to put up the School 80 information right now, okay?
Thank you.
Yep, you can stop sharing your screen, which would allow him to reshare and he'll put School 80 up.
Okay. So while Mike is doing that, I just, thank you so much, Mike. While he's doing that, I just want to say thank you, Mr. Puccucci and Dr. Evans, Madam President and esteemed board members. I can't express to you what a delightful experience this was, working with the principals. As the associates, we had the pleasure of sitting down and working collaboratively with the principals as they worked very intimately with their school community. They worked with their teachers, their other faculty and staff, the nurses, engineers, parents, students. They made sure they heard the voices of everyone that touched that building. The level of detail that they paid attention to is absolutely exemplary. When they did their work, they considered what would be scientific, what would be systematic, and what would be sensitive. They thought about their own children, their own family members, and what it would take to ensure that people, children, were entering a learning environment that would be safe emotionally and physically and optimize student learning, whether they are in brick and mortar or at home. They thought about every detail. I'm very pleased to be able to present one of the plans. This evening, we'll be able to go into the folders and look at all of them. They are all very well done. But principals, being the perfectionists that they are, they continue to create iterations of this plan. Mike, can you go to the next page? So we standardized a template. And that template was developed with principal voice. We pulled together groups of principals and they told us what would make sense as far as a template is concerned. Because the principals, they are the masters at operationalizing plans. So we didn't want to come from a top-down perspective because we're not going to be in the buildings with them in order to make sure that they are able to maximize learning for everyone and keep everyone safe physically and emotionally. They gave us the feedback. So this is a sample page of the table of contents that you will find in this plan. And as principals continue to revise their plans, you will find the same format in the rest of them. We can go on to the next page, Mike. So on this first page, Mike, can you make that a little bit bigger? Is that possible? On this first page, you will see the members of the teams that the principals engaged in order to make this really very sensitive decision around that school community views as, who that school community views as their most sensitive, most needy children. So they met with the teachers, they met with the custodians and engineers, they met with the nurses, they met with the OT and PT teachers. They held meetings and they had substantive conversations about groups of children who would benefit most from being able to return to school five days a week. So you'll see the dates of those meetings and the individuals who were engaged in the planning. Mike, we can go to the next page.
Mike, hold on. Cassandra, go back, Mike. Make sure you share with the board because all of the plans, they can see at a glance what's in that gray box. That'll tell you how many staff are at the school, how much over, how many overall enrollment, the student population is, and then what number of students have been selected for this phase of the reopening. 60 in this case. And you'll see that at every school. That's important to note. Because, because this number is a percentage of the overall, so you can get a quick glance of that. 60 over 432. But keep in mind, it's 60 plus 57 are going to have to come back to school at the same time. So it'll be the 60 kids that have been identified plus all of the faculty. And that's important to distinguish there. So 111, 117 for this particular school. Now we build the footprint and have to make sure that everyone is safe in the school. Well, 117 people. All right, Sandy, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Cassandra? I believe she's frozen, Dr. Cash.
Oh, I'm sorry. Turn up the heat. All right. That's bad, that was poor. Could you go to the next slide? There you go. So, Kantan, I like to share sometimes the responsibility. Why don't Kantan or Darlene help, help your colleague out there a little bit? Just say a little something here about the main points.
So schools had to form a rationale around why they determined which students they selected. They select, they use New York State Assessment Data, they use DIBLs data, they use ATTENDANCE, they use IEP data. So in all the plans, you'll see a list of data that schools use in order to support the group of neediest students that they were tasked with selecting. And the groups that worked together, the site-based management team meetings, the groups that Cassandra was talking about earlier, they worked together to come to consensus to determine what was the most neediest students or who were the most neediest students based on the data that was provided. So at School 80, you'll see that she selected her special education students who are classified or who are classified as autistic. She also will be bringing back some of her general education students with, for a total of 60 students that she'll be phasing in. So the numbers that you see as the targeted number of students for phase in are the.
Thank you, Kantan.
Okay, there's a column for the.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I'm sorry, team, I got kicked out of the meeting. And so it's Kantan, I'm sorry, where did you leave off?
Just explain to them, I went over the rationale and I explained to them how she selected her targeted group of students for phase in and in comparison to the number of classes that were on the list for enrollment. And then the use of the data for the selection.
Absolutely, thank you. This, this particular team in this school chose to bring their self-contained special education classrooms and some of their early, the youngest learners in the 7th and 8th grade. So they have a rather heterogeneous group of students that they are bringing back. Total of that is 60. I think Kantan, you said you already reviewed the supporting data and evidence?
You can say a little more about that, Dr. Wright.
Okay. So as. Yeah, so as you could see, they had a very, they had several comprehensive groups of teachers and related services, specialists working together. And what they did was they went classroom, classroom. And they reviewed a few data points. They started with who is actually engaged in, engaged in online learning and who is being successful. If those children are being successful, then it's not, they're not necessarily the ones that need to come in. They also spoke with parents. Some of the parents said, I'm not ready for my child to come in for a number of reasons. And most of them, Dr. Cash had already cited earlier in the presentation, they were simply concerned about the COVID rates. They were concerned about whether or not their child would be able to follow the CDC guidelines. They were concerned about the unintentional consequence and sometimes devastating, devastating impact if one of their children contracted the virus. So at this particular school, about 50% decided they did not want to come back. So after looking at who's already been successful, who is not coming back, they were able to drill down to those children in those classrooms that would benefit the most. Taken into consideration, there may be several phases, they thought about, well, who would benefit from the first phase? So they decided to bring back our students with special education and related services, our youngest learners, and our 7th and 8th grade students who deemed to be very fragile at this point in time and whose parents really wanted and felt the need for them to return to brick and mortar. The next slide, please, Mike? So again, there were, these are the details about the academic considerations. So when they were putting together the plan, they thought very deeply around, okay. So when they were putting together the plan, they thought very deeply around, okay, we have kids in the building, so we're teaching the kids in brick and mortar. What are we going to do about the kids who have that same teacher who is learning online? So they thought about how to create and structure a schedule so that that teacher of the child who is in brick and mortar could remain the teacher for the child who is online. So they were doing some creative scheduling to make sure that the learning community that has already been established since September would continue in every case possible. So I won't read through those, the details, but in every plan, you will see that the principal and the leadership team took that particular academic consideration into deep thought, and they teased out a plan that would benefit both the child who's in brick and mortar and the child who is at home. The next page, please.
That's an important point, Sandy, thank you for that.
You're welcome. And here goes an example of a schedule for a child who's in kindergarten. And please note on the bottom, so we're very sensitive about the amount of screen time a child has to have, particularly for our youngest learners. So, and then we're also very sensitive about the fact that we've got to get them engaged in academics. So how do we create a healthy balance? So the goal is to start with roughly a hundred and sixty-five minutes of synchronous instruction, and the teacher, working intimately with the children, will gauge at what point you increase that time. So what we don't want to do is replicate the poor teaching practices from brick and mortar and bring them into online learning. So we never wanted a kid to sit in front of a teacher all day long in brick and mortar in a classroom. So we don't want students to sit in front of a screen all day long while they're online. So what is that delicate balance? And to be quite honest, it's case by case. Some children are able to handle it a little longer than other children, and we rely on the expertise of the teacher and the principal, and with the professional development plans that we have intact to help teachers gauge at what point is synchronous too much? At what point is asynchronous too much? And that's, that can be a day-by-day situation. So we're very proud of the methods that our principals have been utilizing in order to get inside of those classrooms. It's more, it's less about evaluating teachers and more about evaluating the learning. And they're developing a great balance of what should be synchronous and what should be asynchronous. We can go on to the next page, please. Okay, socio-emotional. When we are thinking about what has to be done, there's no way in the world we can prepare for academics without considering what needs to be done for the socio-emotional. So we know that many of our families have already been devastated by the impact of the, the direct impact of the coronavirus. We know that far more have been impacted by the indirect impact of the coronavirus, being isolated, not being able to be with their friends. Your whole world has changed. Learning is a social construct, and when we talk about social constructs, we talk about being with each other. And that is not what, that is not the environment that our teachers and our children are learning in. And now we have parents who have the increased burden of making sure that they are both breadwinners and caregivers and educators of our children. It's a lot, and I don't think anyone would disagree with that. So the principals have thought very thoughtfully around what families need for support, what students need for support, what teachers and staff need for support. And as ASLs, we think about what our principals need for support. Everyone, everyone in this surreal environment is in need of support. And again, the teachers, the principals, the committees have thought very deeply around what that needs to look like. So in addition to the supports that are needed, there's also the need to make sure that we are continuing our work on equity and culturally and linguistically responsive practices. Dr. Morell has done a phenomenal job prepping our entire district and our entire community around those practices, and we will, and we have been continuing them. She included, she included some information that the school community will continue to build on and personalize per building. You'll see this document in every plan. We can, to the next page? And that's additional information regarding the CLRI practices. And then we talked about a communication plan. So what is communication going to look like? So now during phase in, we want to be, the principals, the learning community will be communicating to both teachers and children who are in school and teachers and children who are at home. So that calls for a robust and diverse communication plan. And we've talked about this before, all of the different measures that principals have and continue to utilize in order to communicate effectively, respectfully, and consistently with their parents. Again, I was talking about the fact that principals are masterful at operationalizing a plan. The goal is to be able to return people to school and we not have to shut down, because district, private sector, public sector, we're seeing what's happening. Schools are bringing children back for their version of a phase-in plan, and then they have to shut down for two weeks. That's completely disruptive to the children, to the faculty, to the students. I would even say it has to be traumatic. In this plan, we are being very thoughtful around every microdetail it will take in order to keep everyone safe. And this is what you will find in the staff and student logistics. The staff, the principals and their teams have thought about what type of protective gear, equipment the students, the faculty and staff will need. They outline that in the plan. The next page, please. We can go to the next page. They talked about their needs. So this is what we need, district members, so that we in the building can be safe. I do want to highlight a couple of the things that all of the principals agreed was, would be necessary to make sure that everyone stays safe. And they need district and the Division of Health support regarding surveillance testing. And that's, that's not as invasive as that nostril test that you've seen. And they also want support from the district and the Division of Health on contact tracing. So what, who, if someone does test positive, how are we going to make sure everyone is safe? There are other things on this, on their list that they need, but I wanted to make sure that I highlighted those as being very important to the principal and their teams and mechanisms to keep their staff safe so that they don't have to close. Next page, please. Again, as we were saying, every microdetail has been paid attention to, whether it is how to walk in the hallways, where parents pick up and drop off their children, which doors do they come into? How do the bus students, what's the protocol for behavior on the bus? What happens when the bus, children get on the bus? What happens when the children get out of school, back onto the bus? What do the bathroom breaks look like? What does lunch and breakfast look like? They work all of that out. They also decided that they would change the name, in many cases, of that isolation room. So again, being very, very sensitive around, there is a requirement that every building have a, an isolation room. The principals have decided to change that to a restroom restore room or some other type of name, what, because they were, they didn't want people that they were being punished because they contracted the virus. I just wanted to emphasize that because it's really important to note the details that the principals went through in order to secure an environment that is both physically and emotional, and will yield high academic outcomes for our students. Next page, please. Again, details about the protocols and procedures of coming into the building and staying safe. The next page? And finally, they just wanted you to have a glimpse of what a classroom would look like per social distancing guidelines. So in this classroom, there would be approximately eight children. This classroom can't have more than ten. Eight children, one adult. And as you can see, the tables are far apart, everyone has to sit by themselves. And the goal is to make sure that while learning is a social construct, so the children can be together, it is also a place where everyone is safe. So just to say in conclusion, I, I hope you can appreciate the deep thinking that the principals and their teams engaged in, in order to create an environment that would both optimize learning and keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. Board members, before we go to the next presentation, if, if any of you have any questions at this point, this would be a good time to, so everybody stays engaged, ask a few questions here would be, would be fine. I think it would be appropriate, if you have any. Does anyone have any?
Sharon was first, and then somebody, and I know Holt was third. I have, I have general questions or across-the-board questions at this point. So I guess what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get my head around is that there are going to be certain requirements and certain standards universally put in place across the district, right?
Yes.
So every school will have a group of guidelines that they will follow, and we will be all in sync with what's going on. So I went to one school, I can expect the same thing at another school as far as some of the basic things such as hygiene, et cetera, et cetera. So some of the questions that I had is, what are the roles of the social workers and the SMBT teams, or the psychologists, and et cetera, in this, in this, in these scenarios across the board, across the district-wide? What role do they play in? Because as I was looking, I think one of the highlights you had is that parents would be required to Google and update their information or something like that, so that we can have their new phone numbers and things like that. But what role are the social workers, psychologists playing in this rollout? Is I guess my first question.
So Tanya, you have some of those folks, and I think Ann has some of those folks. And certainly, they're being used now, ASLs, you can amplify my, my response. They're being used now to determine where the students are in their academic learning, in their developmental growth or regress at this point. They've been doing that since the beginning of school, working with their building principals and teams to, you know, do their normal role. They, they really haven't had, I haven't said, don't, you know, stand back or stand down, they're continuing to assess the need for children at this time. Would anyone care to amplify that?
Dr. Holt, you go ahead.
Okay. I believe that the SST team staff were certainly a part of creating the building plans for each of the schools. And within the SST framework are the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three supports. But each school is individualized, they certainly were at the table, they help, they've been helping all along, not only with locating students, but when students are located or not located, tying them to, or, you know, helping them to bridge the gap for what's needed. So, for instance, if there are students that maybe haven't showed up, the SST teams, including the attendance teachers, have been working alongside with myself and other members of Student Support Services to see what we can do. So we've had crisis team members that have been contacted by SST team members to go out and see kind of, you know, what kinds of supports are needed, if children have, you know, had exposure to violence or anything like that. Again, you know, the SST team has a framework for who to contact, they all know, who to contact for what situations. So within this realm, it would be the same, the Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three, those things that all students get, those things that some students need, and then for that top tertiary level of students that really need more individual support, they have a framework for knowing exactly who to contact to get what they need.
Okay, so can I, can I ask a question? Because I attended the New York State School Board Association, and I attended a seminar on mental health and student support. And one of the things that they said is that under the 218 mental health guideline that was put in place, that all children should have access to your SST team, I said SMBT, but it's SST team, in some way or another. And so does that include classroom? Do they get involved? Do they do anything in front of the, as a, as a group? How is that being, how is that manifesting? Because they're saying more than ever now that the role of the social worker and the counselors are crucial in making sure that children's needs are being assessed collectively as well. So I'm just trying to see, are we doing that across our district? Do we have counselors that are doing that with the classrooms and things like that?
Absolutely. Now more so than ever before, our SST team talents are being fully realized. And many of the schedules, you will see that they begin their day with a restorative circle or morning circle. They end their day with the same. Our SST teams serve on our outreach teams. So particularly, for our McKinney-Bentle children, that can be hard to locate, who may need additional support. They are phenomenal at making sure that our McKinney-Bentle kids are taken care of, and they're safe, and their, their learning isn't interrupted. So absolutely, we couldn't do this without the SST teams.
Okay. And so part B of that is, are we capturing the data? Or are they required, being required to report out, and we keep an idea of what services are being provided for these children on a daily, weekly basis, so that we can use that information to help? So that's good. So that's my base question on that. The only other question is, is now the bathrooms scheduled to be cleaned throughout the district?
What's that, Mr. Chapman?
How often are the bathrooms scheduled to be cleaned throughout the day, return?
What do you, what do we say, Jim? Three times? What, what was, what are we working on with the custodians?
So Dr. Cash, we're, we're working on a standard operating procedure right now, where we've developed that for when students come back. We've purchased Kyvac bathroom, bathroom cleaning machines, which sanitize and clean the bathrooms, and we are planning on doing that twice a day, and each time checking for supplies, materials, soaps, all of the different things that are in the bathroom. So we're, we have a plan for that. So we're, we have a plan for that, to do that twice a day.
And so will, will there be a sheet on the wall, a checklist sheet that says when they came in? So similar to what you see in most of these establishments nowadays?
There is, there, there, there is a, there is a log that is required. I am not positive whether it's on every single door, but I can check into that.
Okay, I would prefer that we do have that as well as one that they can have on their own. But I really think that it needs to be, and if, if the health department comes in, that we, they, we can show that this bathroom was looked at at 2:30 and someone signed off on it. I think that would make me feel better as a parent, as, as, as a board member going into a building or whatever. The only other question, I'll let someone else talk, is are we asking questions of the children about, as, as, as we're being asked as we go into places? Weekly basis, who have you been exposed to? Have you been around someone who had symptoms? Are we doing that each day with each child? Or are we just doing the temperature to see if the child has a fever or whatever? Are we asking the child, have they been around anyone who are, have symptoms similar to what COVID may look like?
You mean when we return kids, when we start to return? I don't think, I don't, I don't think we are right now. I don't, I didn't see that on a checklist. And I'm not sure how we would do that. So we certainly can make a note of it.
I understand the teachers aren't doing it also. Aren't doing it as well. So if you look at what's been going on a lot, there have been quite a few cases of teachers getting the COVID versus the children, which we thought it was going to be just the opposite, that the children were going to be giving it to the adults. And it looks like that, that we have a pattern of adults bringing it forward too. So I'm just curious to know that's going to look moving forward. I also like to
move any forward, teachers do fill out the health screening form when they come into the building daily. So that is filled out daily by the teachers for, for every school.
And so do you think that we may need to implement that in the classroom if not just as a group? Have any of you, once in your morning meeting or your meeting time, that you ask those questions of the students to be preventative and to be protective of our, our, our student base? That's something that should be incorporated in to the daily process.
Okay, we'll take that into consideration. Thank you.
Barry?
Yes, Dr. Wright, thank you for your presentation. I'm fairly comfortable and happy with it. Seems like it was inclusive of the stakeholders that are relevant to that school, data-driven, based on the, the needs or the, the most significant needs of those students. What I'm wondering for those, so you have 50% of students potentially going into those grade levels, students with autism going into the self-contained classrooms, but you don't have all of those students that are going to be in person. So how will their learning continue while they're still remote?
So you're asking, so if there's a special education classroom of six kids and only four return, you're asking about what happens with the other two?
Yes.
In, in this particular school, the teachers have requested webcams and special headphones so that they could be able, the kids who are at home can tune in and watch the teacher who is in the building with their students. We have found that many of the teachers want to do that. We're, we have situations where teachers aren't comfortable with that. The principals have thought very creatively around how to utilize the other staff. See, all of the teachers will be returning. A small number will be face-to-face. And there will be many other adults in that building who will be able to take on responsibilities of ensuring that the children who are at home are learning as well. So let's just say it's a reading teacher. So if the classroom teacher is not comfortable allowing the student at home participate in her instruction for that, for the reading course, the reading teacher could take a small group or the integrated coach teacher can take a small group. What the principals have to do, which would be very humane to each building, is look creatively at the staff and configure a schedule that will ensure that there is no gap in instruction for any child.
So potentially, we could have students that would have to begin with a different teacher for a particular subject area. Or their, their schedule could be altered to some extent in order to make this all work?
We're trying to avoid that. Colleagues, you spoke to that. If you want to say more about that, because that was one of the things I wanted you to be the most intentional about, minimize disruption with teachers and relationships they have built with the students. So can you just, not only you, Sandy, but also Tantan and a few others respond to what Larry's concern is?
So, and actually, that was a data point regarding which students would be coming back. So which teachers feel most, the most comfortable with that dynamic of having students in person and having students who are at home? And to, and, and every principal included that in their data points. And you would be surprised at the number of teachers who are minimal to service both sets of students, whether online or in school or online. Tantan, you're going to say something?
Yes, I was just going to add to what you were saying. In some situations, actually, in a lot of the situations, what we're seeing in our plans is that there's, just like a teacher would do during a regular school day, if she was teaching ELA, she would split those groups. So, and there's another adult in the room. So you'll see it go through the plans. There's another adult that's also in there. I think for the high school, they are calling the learning lab. So during those small groups, she'll have a synchronous group of kids where it will be right in front of her. And the kids will virtually be working asynchronously. At the same time, it will be supported by another person in the, in the classroom, whether it be a teacher aide or another adult that's in the room. And then during that same reading block, they switch. So you'll see in special ed classrooms, they're using some of the integrated coaching models like parallel teaching, team teaching. So it kind of lends itself, like teaching assist. So it lends itself for the ability for more than one adult to work with a group of kids. And that they don't have to, they will still remain, still have the same teacher in their class. So the teacher just pull small groups throughout the day. So now it's math time. I could teach a whole group lesson, but I could also pull a small group, right? These are the kids that I know need to be, need to be with them in the small group. These kids will be working asynchronously. And then you can switch those from the kids that are working remotely and the kids that are working in person. So it's very similar to what you would do during a regular day. And the principals have ironed some of those wrinkles out by putting some of the students into the classroom.
Thank you. And I just, you know, my, my question just pertains to ensuring the integrity of the education that our students who are going to remain remote. Because, you know, I'm seeing some good stuff and I want to ensure that that continues. And I'm also seeing how disruptive a hybrid model is becoming to that remote instruction, where now we're just having students doing asynchronous and very limited synchronous. So I just want to have that, you know, and it sounds like you're already trying to plan this out. You know, it's a lot to juggle and you're trying to figure out how to best, best maintain the integrity of education for in-person and for remote. So thank you.
Is that our kids have learned to, our students have learned to use some of the technology. So when you're talking about them working in person, there is technology that they're able to use, like Lexia, like Myon, like some of the programs that we were trying to get kids to and families and teachers to use. They've become more proficient in using those. So it'll be much easier to have those groups go on to asynchronous and synchronous because they also have different platforms that the teachers have been using.
Thank you.
Next. Followed by Terrence and then Anne.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have, just have a couple of questions. Thank you for the great presentation, Dr. Sandra Wright and Mrs. Dabney. I know over at 280, Dr. Urban Wright is a great principal there. And I know she's going to stay very particular to detail about, you know, reopening during COVID. One thing I would like to say, I did receive a couple of questions from news. And, and I reached out to the chief of staff to state that this did not happen yet. You know, there has been no kids inside the buildings yet. And it seemed like they had an impression that it was already kids being, being placed inside the buildings during this, during this event that we put together. I'm sorry. Last, one of my questions were about transportation. I'm concerned about the transportation issues. Our, for our kids that's returning back to the buildings, we're looking at 60 children per, per building. Are they going to be monitored by a, a personnel from the Buffalo Public Schools while on the buses? Because we had so many complaints about issues on buses that went about, about it. Maybe if the bus had an aid or didn't have an aid, as far as this process. And I'd just like to know first, would there be a personnel from the Buffalo Public Schools that can monitor the buses while the kids are being bused into the schools? Or would that be left up to just the bus driver or a bus driver and an aide?
Yeah, that's a good question, Terrence. I appreciate the question. First, let me just clarify a point I heard you say about 60. The 60 just applies to this particular school. I gave the directive of up to 100 students. So you'll see plans have variable numbers associated with them. But they're not all 60, okay? So that's just this school. But in terms of the monitoring, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but because we haven't done all of the buses yet, but bus aides, we, we, we continue to hire and pay. So now I think with this initial group of students at least, we should have enough colleagues, enough bus aides to be, to be on all the buses for, for these schools. What, what is Cheryl saying about that, Jim?
I, I know I spoke with her today and we discussed, there will be bus aides on every special ed route when we begin. I didn't get beyond that as far as having them on every single bus. But I know that the bus aides are working and we will use every single one of them as we determine how many routes there are and how this all works out. So I can't give you a specific, we're going to be on 100% of the buses. But we will be using 100% of our personnel to cover the routes that we establish. We just haven't established all of them yet.
Yeah, that, that, so stated another way, Terrence, I believe we'll come very close to having an aide on every bus because we're only getting a fraction of the students back in at this time. See, now, as we continue to bring more and more kids, because we only have, I don't know, 360, close to 400 bus aides at any given time. And then we have 662 routes. If we have everybody back, then that's why it's hard to do a one-to-one for each bus. And we only triage and put bus aides on the high incident buses. But during this early going, my expectation is we'll be close to 100% with, with, with aides per, per route. But Jim's right, the bottom line is we'll be using all of our aides. So whatever that covers, that's what we'll be using.
Will that be including aides that's hired by the bus companies?
I don't think the aides hire the bus. I don't think the companies hire the aides. That's up to the district to hire the aides.
Dr. Cash, there are, there are some aides that are hired through First Student and they will be working as well.
Okay, that's good to hear. I didn't know that. What, what, what do they hire them for?
They, they've been hired as bus aides. I believe a few years back, we required them to do that.
Jim, this is Nate. I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the issue. Board members, in order to supplement, because of the complexity of the civil service issues and, and our need for transportation aides, we could never fill the full complement. So at least for the last five or more years, First Student has been supplementing our aides. And we've been, I think we've had approximately on average about 50 per year that they've supplemented so that we could have as many aides as possible on as many routes as possible.
Thanks, Nate. That helped, that was helpful.
Okay, thank you, sir. My, my next question was, I, I do love the part about how you address the, a means to compliment the seniors. And I'm, and I'm in full push for seniors to return to schools. For college, more one-on-one interaction with teachers. And I believe that expresses educational values that, you know, as going forward, taking SATs, PSATs and moving on to college, something we discussed later on in educational support. But, but I, I just want to, to verify that, what's the plan for the seniors to return? What, what do we have placed down that, you know, that we can give our seniors, you know, more cognitive development towards, you know, a focus on colleges and college preparation?
Well, there's a full array of supports for seniors. But in this initial grouping of students going back, I've left it to the school-by-school decision-making process to determine whether seniors are in that process or not. Some, of course, have them in, but they, they have them in because of high need, getting off track, for example, of graduation, not just the whole senior class coming back. So I'm comfortable right now with the array of services that, and supports that we're offering the seniors. But we don't, we, we'll have to talk more about when and whether the whole class of seniors comes back early in this, in this phase and process.
Okay. And once again, I'm a big support for, for getting our seniors back into the buildings, just, you know, for that, for that type of edification and so they can move forward, you know, in their educational goals. And I know there's other things I'll ask you, I don't want to hold the floor too long, but I'll address it by email about the athletics and lunch also. But we want to top on that, but I'll address those by email. But my, my biggest thing, I would love to see some type of, I know that kids, once they get back together, they've been apart for a very long time now and they, they're going to want to congregate and talk to one another. And I think that bus issue might, might be something that, you know, could be a COVID concern. And I believe that we do need some type of monitor or maybe a teacher or somebody that can help, you know, on the, with the bus and with the bus drivers, you know, to try to control that. Because it's, it's not that, I don't believe the kids are doing anything bad, but I do believe that, you know, must seem after a long period of time, they're going to want to, you know, get close to one another, talk to one another, they're old friends.
Sure.
Thank you.
Agreed. Do, duly noted.
I know Hope was next, but I don't see her. Anne, you're next. Dr. Rivera.
I froze for a minute. Was Hope going to ask some questions before I do?
Wait, Hope. I don't see her, so you go ahead.
Hope is no longer logged on, so we can go on. And maybe she, she may have had to log out.
Did she text you there?
She did not.
Anne is saying she can't hear. Anne is going. Okay, she's fading.
Doctor Rivera.
No.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Oh, fabulous. Okay, sorry, I had a malfunction. I've been having tech troubles all night. So I had a few questions. I have a lot of overall questions, but just a few at this point, which the first one is about policies for six staff members and six students, how they'll be communicated and how absenteeism of students and staff will be monitored. I have one more that's related, which is how workload will be handled for students who may have to go out for a variety of reasons. We're all having to be a lot more careful about illness, whether it's COVID or not.
So, Jamie, are you on the phone or on the meeting? Jamie Warren? Darren, see if you can get Jamie on.
Okay.
Because to me, the policy issue, see, what, what the point is, there, there is policy that has been shared with staff members and throughout the district. So, so there's, there's a lot of work that's gone into communicating with staff about what happens if, if a staff member gets sick. Both from human
I think it's enough, yeah.
From human resources. Darren, we follow some Erie County Health Department guidelines. And because that, Darren, you're muted. Because that guideline just shifted, Dr. Rivera, principally. principals and Erie County BOCs met today to discuss elements of the new executive order, which with a somewhat taxing to us, to say the least. Darren, you just want to give a quick update on that issue?
What issue? Just speaking with Jamie, what issue were you speaking of, Dr. Cash?
The issue of what the BOCs superintendents were talking about today in trying to address when a kid gets sick and, you know, what's going to happen at the school level, schools, kids, staff. Sort of a shift in policy now when they start talking about this testing three days before and then more random and more frequent. It's just all over the place. So say where we are on that.
So absolutely. So there are a number of things discussed, but with regard to the testing of students. So I'll take it in a couple of phases if I may. So having a general policy about regarding testing of students prior to them entering a school building, we as a district cannot do. The Erie County Department of Health cannot support that level of testing. However, what they are able to support are when students or teachers have symptoms when they need to be tested. That's when they can be referred to have a COVID test. This came out of when a student may have had symptoms and they had to quarantine for fourteen days. Parents, and rightfully so, they said, well, if my child does not have COVID, they need to be returned to school sooner because we don't want them missing out on their education if it is in person. Change in the Erie County Department of Health is able to assist with providing testing for any of the students or teachers that are symptomatic. But along with what Dr. Cash is saying, discussion is also around, we have to make sure that what we have in our plans, and I will use the health screening forum that Mrs. Cotton spoke about earlier, we have to make sure we're looking at that health screening forum to make sure we adapt it to the new executive order that came out about travel. You know, because that new executive order talks about how that fourteen-day quarantine is no longer in place. But there is a requirement to get the test three days and then be quarantined for three days until you get another test if you're coming from another state. However, if you're part of the contiguous states, you are excluded from that. However, the Erie County Commissioner of Yobursting does have the authority to enact something for Erie County based on people who are visiting the contiguous states. So that's when Dr. Cash said it's a bit leveled and sometimes we have to be very cognizant of that. That's what he was referring to because there are different rules and regulations coming from different sources.
There certainly are. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, we were all concerned because we're now just three weeks from Thanksgiving. And while a lot of families are telling their family members, you know, don't come near, stay home this Thanksgiving. But there are many families for a variety of reasons, they're going to travel. It's going to be a travel time. And so we're concerned when you start crossing states that aren't in this contiguous state boundary. Now, if we open any time around this Thanksgiving period, we're going to be looking at a spike again in this region. So we're just trying to account for these various concerns. Did Jamie ever get on?
She is on now, Dr. Cash, yes.
Jamie, can you say a word about Dr. Rivera's question around what is our policy and how we've been communicating to our constituents about who are sick? Or who might be, you know, might be sick?
Good evening, board members. Good evening, Dr. Cash. We have, for the most part, employees who are inquiring about their ability to work one hundred percent remotely due to the COVID nineteen virus. The request is four of the three categories. Whether they have an underlying medical condition that would impact them if they were exposed to the virus more negatively than others. They have requests because of lack of childcare, having access to childcare, needing to work one hundred percent remotely. Or they may have a family member with an underlying medical condition where they believe they're putting that family member at risk. Since our students are one hundred percent remote, we have the ability to work with employees and be flexible as long as they are performing one hundred percent of their job. So we have an online system where we've allowed people to make their requests online and we respond online so that we have a way to monitor all requests. Principals are a part of the process. As soon as the employee submits their online request, it's routed directly to the principal who indicates whether that person has the ability to perform their job remotely. They have the materials they need, they have their laptop, they have internet access. And with that indication from the principal, we can say you can remain status quo while we review your request. So we've been very interactive with employees with their requests so that we can support them during this difficult time. We've had less people actually take leaves of absence from work because they've been having the ability to work remotely. We've indicated in the request that it changes when we are reopening. Ability to be as accommodating as we are right now will change upon the return of students. And that's in every response to every request.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that. I just have one follow-up question on that subject, which is about how we'll handle staffing, that what staffing looks like in terms, because there's, you have there's a large project with this in terms of staffing, in terms of the kinds of accommodations that need to be granted. What would happen if a staff member gets sick and then needs to come back in? And I just have a question about if there's a plan in place, you don't have to detail every single piece of it, but just I need to know if there's a plan in place for making sure that there's coverage and if there's a plan for cross-training or being able to move staff around in such a way that makes sense according to their areas of expertise.
Yeah, it's a good question. And that's why I've asked all staff to come back, even though the population is smaller than the whole population. If we require all staff to come back with this first group of students returning in person, then we believe we will have begun to mitigate at least some of those staffing challenges that are cropping up pretty significantly with the hybrid approach. So while we can't say for sure until we start executing these plans, we, because of the request that staff, school-based principals have made with two extra substitutes, all the teacher aides and assistants that they have, all of the support staff coming in to support teachers and their work. Darren, wouldn't you say we should have, and Jamie, adequate staffing by and large to support this phase of the reopening?
We are currently at ninety-eight percent staffed of all of our school vacancies. So what that means is students are being taught by certified staff in ninety-eight percent. We have those shortage areas where we're continuously recruiting and we're very creative with how we allow scheduling to support the needs of students. When we are telling our staff that they all need to return one hundred percent, we'll see if we receive additional requests. But it was really important to Dr. Cash to make sure that the environment was very safe and we put a lot of protocols in place and that we have a seamless process to support staff and staffing. So like Dr. Cash shared, we did put in contingent of subs at each building to support day-to-day absences who could be available to cover longer-term absences. And we continuously recruit in our identified shortage areas. So as people graduate in December, there's another pool of candidates who are available. As people graduate in May, there's more pools of candidates available. So continuously recruiting is our way to mitigate our staffing needs.
Yeah. Now, ASLs, you also assured me, and I thought it was good to hear, that that the staff for these populations that have been selected, you don't think it's going to be a problem. You said the principals said that they're not, they don't see a problem with their teachers because their teachers have said we'll come back for these kids. If I'm wrong about that, just clarify for me. Would one or two of you speak to that?
So no, absolutely, Dr. Cash. Principals are not finding reluctance from their teachers regarding coming back. They are reassured because of the micro detail that are included in the plan around how to keep people safe, that it's a great environment to return to. And additionally, there's a protocol in place where there are two subs that are assigned to every building. So in the event there is an absence, there is someone already ready to to take the place of a teacher so that education remains consistent.
Can I add something? My point, I want some clarity because we did receive a letter or something from the BTF as to some concerns. So in the future, can you share with us what are the protocols? Or when a teacher positive? It just seems like somewhere in this, there's a need to have county do a seminar or something with our, about tracing. It seems that how do, you know, that we should be trained or our staff should be trained at least to have some basic information, you guys are shaking your head, basic information about tracing. And that's something that the state could provide or Erie County should provide so that, oh, you know, how to address that.
Yeah.
Think that we're providers who would automatically understand that protocol.
Yeah. Short answer is that's in a lot of these plans. You'll see it's called for. I remember seeing it, training on these matters. So it's in the detail in these plans. So yes, it's a good point. We're all concerned about it. And we intend to train staff on that.
Thank you.
We're already required to assist the Erie County Department of Health as well on this.
Thank you. Sorry, Anne.
Thank you very much. That was one piece of my questions. I just have two more and it's about the academic climate in education because I agree with what Mr. Scott said, that that's the most important piece in this. I mean, health and safety, I shouldn't even say that. Health and safety and academic climate are the two most important pieces. We need to make sure our community is safe and well and that they continue to learn. I had questions, since we're looking at bringing back the students who are in need in various ways. I had questions about how their academics will be adjusted when they return to the classroom, both through, say, for instance, response to intervention or other academic measures and also how IEPs might be adjusted when students with disabilities return to the classroom.
So I think those are good questions. I don't know, Anne, if you want to talk about that a little bit. Toya, I know that the East Community High School is doing something interesting with all the grades and bringing back a selected portion of all ninth, eighth, I'm sorry, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelve. And so it might come up when you present that plan about, I think we can get a better flavor of how that'll be addressed. So why don't we, if there are no other questions after that, why don't we segue to the East High School plan? And I think that question can come up and we'll make sure we address it as part of that plan, Dr. Rivera. Is that fair?
That sounds good. Absolutely. Thank you.
Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown, are you okay with that?
I don't see any other hands, so we can move on.
Lou, I see Lou.
Thank you, Dr. Cash. I just have two quick questions. For a little bit of clarity, so about the teaching methodology, how's it going to work with teachers teaching both in-person and remotely at the same time? I just, I just want to know how that's going to look or am I misreading how the instruction is going to go in some of these classrooms?
Yeah, I think Kantan did a really good job sort of explaining that. I'll just try to help and then someone, you know, closer to the learner every day can come in. But expert teachers, Lou, on a regular, in a regular non-COVID environment, have multiple groups functioning at any given time, particularly elementary teachers. And so I think what I heard Kantan say, as long as we get the right equipment into these classrooms, you can be grouping students according to their academic needs, even within the group that you have before you, both in-person, doing some synchronous and asynchronous work with them. And then you do synchronous and asynchronous work with students who are online as well. I'm not trying to oversimplify it because in a regular classroom, it's actually a thing of beauty and art to see how this is done. But if anyone could amplify this or talk about this a little bit, I think Lou's asking a good question that a lot of people have. Could you help me a little bit, colleagues?
So I'll chime in at the secondary level. And this is a little bit of a preview for the East Plan. But you'll see this play out pretty much in all of the high school plans. Really, we're calling them learning labs and the opportunity to capitalize on the type of schedule that our students already have around synchronous and asynchronous instruction and looking at how the teacher groups them and assigns assignments, assesses where they are to make sure that as they're grouping them, the groupings are appropriate. And then use different support to support students either while they're in the classroom, both virtually and in-person or maybe even a room right next door, working with an aide, but the teacher has assigned them a project that is an asynchronous assignment for the day while she's working synchronously with the virtual students and then the next day swap. So you'll see that the unit planning that goes along with that, you'll see teachers planning for some, much of maybe the whole group together as synchronous while there's kids who are virtually or in-person in front of them. You'll see them splitting off and the groups will be working on projects or different activities that the teacher can basically use to get them working individually while they work with the other group synchronously. And you'll see them, you'll see some virtual still playing out in the mix because you will see split classes. You will see that some classes come back or, excuse me, some students come back in a class and while others remain virtual. And we really wanted to hit home that teachers should not change. The relationships are really, really important. And since we do have all of these established relationships, we want to capitalize on that but provide in-person support through the use of a teacher who might have a duty, who can support a group, an aide or a teacher assistant.
Just kind of a follow-up question. I have great confidence in the skill and ability of our teaching staff and their I worry a little bit, though, I know that I'll speak personally in my department, oftentimes isn't the capacity of the people I supervise, it's the technology. What happens when technology goes bad? Will we be able to respond in a timely manner to get everything up and running, to get the kids the instruction that they need?
Yeah, I think that's always a fair question. I mean, where's Myra? Myra, are you there? I think we've done amazingly well with staying online and keeping the systems up when you consider how large the school system is and how challenging it can be. We certainly have a great team working on this challenge all the time. We have a great backup system, really good data backup systems in two schools. So I feel as confident as you can be. Now, I do have concerns about this malware and this, you know, some of these hackers that are going on, we hear about it in business in another organization. So we've had a case like that, but it didn't actually hit us. It hit the provider of the software. So we keep our eyes alert and we take swift and decisive action if anything happens. But I feel pretty confident, Lou, that we won't have a crash, knock on wood. I think we'll be okay.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cash. Just one more question and I'll be quiet. I'm a little bit worried because oftentimes we have multiple people going to various school buildings throughout the school day. So let's say you're an electrician, you have four workers, you're going to be at four different schools or security or wherever it may be, or even our substitutes. What type of control and monitoring do we have in place for these members of our staff to go to multiple school buildings in one day to make sure that they're not moving the virus around from school to school?
Right, or vice versa. They come and they have more likelihood to come in contact with. So it's a good question as well. And I think, colleagues, what I saw in the appendix and in that whole logistics, PPE safety section of your plans, you talk about who can come in, what process they have to follow. you talk about who can come in, what process they have to follow when they do, you know, temperature checks. We'll have two types of major equipment. We'll have the scanner, temperature check, hand wand, and then the group like we have down on the first floor down. Actually, the basement, Lou, you know, when you first come in to the city hall.
Every morning, Dr. Cash, every morning, yes. I know it well.
There you go. So we'll have those in every school, two, two of those in every school, plus two handhelds. So I just think we'll be able to be proactive around this. A lot of this is there's an honor system in this, and that's where my concern comes, is that if you're sick, stay home. If you if you have a fever or you have any of the symptoms, you know, got to, you got to take action right away. You have to do that. But a lot of times what we're seeing is people, because of what they have to do to survive, they 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 come to work sick or, you know, sometimes they go to work, don't know that their children are sick. And it's not always the flu. It can be, I mean, COVID, it can be other things. Kids get a whole lot of things this time of year that look like COVID, but it's not. And so there's a lot of time, a lot of different things we just have to do. We have good nurses and we'll have everybody alert. I'm impressed with how how super conscious our principals appear to be about this. They they don't want any case on their watch. They don't want to get sick themselves and they don't want anybody else to get sick. So everybody is being super vigilant about this, Lou. And so your your concerns are our concerns and we thank you for for sharing them.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cash.
Thank you. I want to try to get to this, I want to try to get to this East High School because you're going to be up on seven o'clock and we still have a number of things to do under our report.
There's, parents, you'll be the last question.
I'm sorry, I just have one last question. Just starting about our youth doing inclement weather and entering to the school building. Just to reflect off what you just said, hold on one second, please. Thank you.
Huge.
Apologize. When it's clement weather, you know, Buffalo, it gets very blizzardy and and and, you know, the cold weather and the wind and.
Wind. I've never seen it.
Never seen it?
I've been here five years, I've never seen it.
You go and work downtown, so you've seen it. We, I'm just starting about our kids. Is there going to be an entry plan going into the school where, you know, we know they're going to be wound, they're going, the kids are going to be checked, you know, entering to the building? Is there an entry plan going into the school where kids are not, you know, standing outside? Love you guys. Bye.
Nice. Well, yeah, it's going to be a couple of checkpoints. It's going to be a checkpoint at home. We're going to ask parents to start the process when they can at home every day, you know? The buses that you alluded to is a possibility of students coming onto the bus. If we can get them the proper equipment, that might be another checkpoint. And then, of course, getting off the bus and coming into the school is a checkpoint. So we're looking to have several checkpoints on on basic health, short of testing, coming into the school each day.
Yeah, my concern was the kids standing outside in inclement weather.
Oh, in the bus, again, well, you know, we, every year, we partner with a lot of organizations, faith-based organizations, community-based. Each of our schools has some wonderful inventory of coats and gloves and boots. I mean, we have a lot of, what do you call it, winter clothing if if kids need it. So we we we're concerned about that as well every year, but we will make sure that if students need clothing, we'll get it to them.
Okay, thank you.
Warm clothing. Okay. You ready? All right, let's proceed, colleagues, and try to finish up here because there's several other committees. And these are great questions and we appreciate them, we really do. They help sharpen our thinking around around this important matter. So East Community High School, Adrian Colfield and her team, and of course, Toya Wilson supervising that. They also submitted an excellent plan, done a lot of work on it. So let's hear from that school. Toya Wilson.
Good evening, board members. I'm just going to take a moment to share my screen. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right. So I'm very pleased to present to you the East Community Plan. And as you can see, we're going to jump right in. Dr. Wright really did an amazing job highlighting all the work that the principals did across all 60 schools. They rolled their sleeves and they've really been very thoughtful about how they determine who the student should be coming back to their schools for this phase-in model. And I have the wonderful pleasure of working with Principal Adrian Colfield and her team to really get this plan to a level where they feel very good about the work they've accomplished to be ready for those students. So you'll see many of the of the same elements. There's very, there's a lot of similar elements throughout this plan from the previous plan you just viewed. We really tried to help our principals, we worked with a group of principals and helped the rest of the principals really come up with a consistent way that they were going to be doing this work and a consistent way to get it across to the whole community. So everything starts off with a table of contents. And then we jump right into the stakeholder groups. And so Principal Colfield and her team, Prince AP Bowden and AP Khalil, worked very closely with a number of groups here to come to consensus. And as you can see at the top of this page, they have identified 75 is their number, 75 students that would come back to East Community in this phase-in plan. And then you see the number of different stakeholder groups that they engaged with to make sure that this plan was at the level that it needed to be. As always, we leave with our mission and vision, you know, who are we as a school community? And then right into how the students were identified to come back to East Community. So as Dr. Cash mentioned, East really looked at students' grades nine through 12 and really wanted to, they cut across the entire school because it really reached out to all teachers, the the student support team, any support groups that they had in the school, every angle of really trying to hone in on who these kids could be and really come up with across the board, who should be returning. And so you see that you've got a range of students here in the student breakdown that range from freshman to senior year. And you also see that there's a number of students coming from different backgrounds as far as accommodations, English language learners, special class, and five or fours. Now, to arrive at this number of 75, they really worked hard to cross-reference a number of data points. Cohort tracking, every high school right now is engaged in cohort tracking every five weeks, in which they're really looking at how every single student in each one of their classes, how they're doing with courses that lead to success for graduation. So there's there's the cohort tracking report that is an extensive report that goes student by student and really unpacks everything we need to know about them as we track towards graduation. They cross-reference that with the five-week reports, teacher recommendations, student support team that was mentioned earlier, and requests for intervention forms. So those requests for intervention forms also get fed to the student support team. And then they use the capacity dashboard that we have to help us see how classrooms play out as far as what would happen with their schedule and being able to social distance in each classroom. The main piece of this, this all comes together with student feedback. They've been in constant contact with their families, doing, completing several surveys, several touch points with students to hear what they're feeling during this time. All of the high schools took advantage of, and they continue to take advantage of, having sessions with their students to hear student voice and use that to drive their work. East was at the forefront of that work. And so they've canvassed many families across, they canvassed the entire school and they've come up with 75 students that they will continue to outreach to to return in this favorite phase-in model. I talked about the academic considerations already a little bit. Here's the plan that we really wanted to dig into. It was really critical. We're talking about our needy students. These students already have very strong relationships with the teachers that they have on their schedule. And we felt it was very important that if we were going to develop a plan, that those relationships and those social emotional supports that are tied to those relationships remain in place. So we asked each school to think about how they could bring students back and make sure that they remain with their teachers. So their teacher of record will remain the same and they will, they will engage in asynchronous and synchronous work just as they have been doing since the start of the school year. But for the students who are returning, that work will happen right on campus. So, for example, if I'm in the middle of asynchronous work and something happens with my computer, I feel frustrated, I feel like I want to have a meltdown, there's an adult right there in the room with them to support them, help them get back on track, troubleshoot what could be going wrong with their technology and help them stay focused on the asynchronous work, which you know that when they're working at home, they may not have that. So in in thinking about it that way, we want to make sure that those connections are there. So these schedules will remain in place. Thinking about high schools, all of them have the the number of periods that that range from eight periods or more, depending on the schedule. East, in this case, has eight periods a day. And so the students will come in, they will follow their regular schedule. To answer Mr. Hurd's question about arrival, they have a plan, and we'll talk about it a little bit more in the appendix, but they have a plan to receive students early so that they would be able to come into the building, engage in breakfast, and I think many schools do this, engage in breakfast. But if they come after that point, they also can have breakfast in the classroom. The lockers would be at places that would be able to store things for kids during the school day. They have access to those lockers throughout the day. And their period, their class schedule would remain the same, so they would continue through their eight periods a day. But at the high schools, what you found is that most high schools have rotated their synchronous and asynchronous instruction 50% of the time through core classes. So, for example, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Monday, Wednesday, Friday, I may have synchronous instruction for math, science, and social studies. And then something else is opposite that, asynchronous. And then it flips the other days. So that's just an example of what you will see in many of the high schools. East will continue to use that thinking to make sure that every student has access back to their teacher of record and is still connected to that teacher. Social emotional learning. So here, we wanted to highlight the three areas of support that we really want to offer across the entire school community. Family support. So there's a comprehensive effort to connect families to resources across the district that is done in a way that is zoned out. And in these zones, the East Community School has has identified all of the resources that families could need, from domestic abuse to legal support and medical questions that they might be able to call and have answered. So they have this this access. You see a number of things there that offer family support. Student support, you see restorative circles, opportunities for students to engage. East is at the forefront of connecting with students through social media. And then you'll see check-in, check-out, all those things happening throughout the day. For teacher support, book studies, East really wanted to hit hard the the IT support. So they had this this plan to have teachers continue to be supported through the IT department to really come in and work with the teachers around that technology that we talked about being in use in classrooms that would help them be able to connect with students who are virtually and in person. Culturally and linguistically responsive instruction. So under the leadership of Dr. Morel, this is amazing work that was kicked off at the start of school year and the lessons continue to be folded into the work that is happening at East Community. So East School was able to access a bank of lessons that supported this work. And East has decided to make sure that once we finish the first two weeks of straight lessons, that they would be folding in these lessons throughout each week. So there's still touch points built in there. And we also have asked Dr. Morel to extend this work so that we have multiple touch points throughout the school year for all of the high schools. So the focus was placed there because we felt like it was needed there first. And there's a series of sessions that will kick off in January for the high schools. Communication plan and orientation. So here, East really wanted to think about how they were connecting with families one-on-one beyond the 75 that were identified, making sure that they are calling each family and having an interview with each family to go further. They've already collected so much survey data, they want to continue to expand on that and really hear the concerns of families and students as they continue to make that determination of the students who would return. In in an effort to support the students and their understanding and what they need and what will help them feel comfortable coming back, they've also identified an orientation that they would do over a series of days that will really hone in on COVID policies, understanding what you need to know, if if you're you're thinking, do I, do I go to school today? I have a runny nose, what's going on with that? All of those things will be identified through their orientation, as well as how things will be operationalized at East. So here with with staffs and student logistics, you see some similar items from the from the previous plan. We dig into how will classrooms be set up to make sure that social distancing will be in place. Each principal received a data report of a candidate design Buffalo Capacity Dashboard that breaks out every single room in their school and it lays out the number of students as well as the number of teacher desks, teachers, anyone who could be in that room. So they know exactly what the capacity is using social distancing that is outlined by CDC. So every school used that. East has done that and they will continue to develop those plans as we cross-reference with the students who they're doing those one-on-one interviews with to make sure that, and then making sure their schedules are appropriate and that they have teachers to assign to the group so that when they do their synchronous and asynchronous planning, they they have the folks in place they need. They've also come up with, you can see here, plans for how you will change classrooms. Because as you know, in a high school, again, they have eight periods. So what happens between classrooms? How will students exit? What will teachers do between the classrooms? What do they need to have? So these policies are laid out here. Expectations for masks and how that will will be played out in the classroom and throughout the building for both students and staff. We've expanded the mask, the PPE. Those are on NFTA buses. So we've identified a plan to enlist in using student student leaders on NFTA buses. So once we have identified, finalized the identification of our 75 students, we then will have transportation give us the routes of of the buses that will be coming in, identify a student leader who could be on that bus, who would be able to support other BPS students having access to a mask if the bus pulls up and they don't have a mask. They forgot theirs, they ran out of the house, they left it sitting on the table. We know that happens, right? So how do we make sure that the NFTA will still service our students? We will make sure they have masks and we're going to use student leaders to do this.
I think that's a great idea, that's creative.
Overall needs. So you see here, we spell out some of the, all the needs that each school has. I'd like to point out some of the things like, this was a question about the district flow chart training. So that was a question earlier. So that is a request that principals are saying, yes, our staff need this. This is something we want to have in place before everyone returns. We want to make sure that there's a way to trace, do whatever we need to do. We want to make sure that there's a way to trace, do whatever we need to do if there's a confirmed COVID test or a case. They actually have many protocols that have been delivered to them from through HR. But then how do you take it a step further now that we have students coming into the building? They want to make sure that everyone knows that inside out. And so you see that there, you see surveillance testing. Again, that was mentioned in the earlier plan. It's something that every school has agreed is something they would like to have a support or need to have a support. Contact tracing support, also something that each schools is saying they need support with. East has taken this step further, the IT department, and continuing to support teachers. And so you see a number of things here that are similar and and will look similar as you review the the other school plans. Now, as you get into the appendix, this is where you see everything become operationalized. The rest and retreat room, that's the isolation room. So you see, East has identified that room and identified what will happen when a student has to go there and a parent has to come pick them up. How will they reunite those that student with their parent? Hallways, how will that happen? How will students transition and what would be the expectation for students and teachers and staff members? Lunches, how lunches will play out. There are two lunches and there's not going to be more than 37 students in each lunch. But you see all of the elements broken out here for what will need to happen in the cafeteria for lunch. Breakfast, for the most part, we want to see that happen in the classroom. Not only is it a good opportunity to have students have a really relaxed start to their school day, but it is also an opportunity to build relationships further with that teacher that they're starting off the school day with. And you see that there are lockers, gatherings, arrivals, dismissal. All those things are spelled out and will continue to be developed as each school continues to develop their plan. Thank you, and welcome any questions.
Thank you, Toya. Well done. Colleague, Dr. Brown, you, I think I see Hope back, so maybe Hope has some questions that we missed. And then I have one more piece in this presentation and then that that will conclude staff part. But Dr. Evans Brown, if, you know.
Yes, I know Hope had a question in the last phase. Hope, you want to ask your question?
Thanks. Dr. Rivera asked the questions that I was planning to ask, so it's it's fine. Thank you.
Oh, great. One of the questions, wow. I hate to bust your bubble, but I think older kids ought to be asked how they feel when they return to these buildings. I think in addition to facts, I'm not sure who who's going to do those temperature checks protocol that everybody uses across the country. As you know, had experiences and heard experiences where individuals have the virus, the COVID virus, and not experience any symptoms right away. Eventually, they will. And so and and you may have this in your guidelines already, I'm not sure. But what would be, you back up. Frontier, for example, recently had two buildings where I think four teachers tested positive for COVID and another building, some kids tested positive, so they shut down and quarantined for 14 days. Is that our protocol as well? Let's say, for example, in one of the buildings, someone tests positive. I know you've talked about isolation rooms, but do the building quarantine for 14 days? Because that is one of the standards that CDC recommends. You know, going, when we talk about older children, I think we need to ask them specifically, just like we ask the adults, how do you feel today? Because you should not, I mean, you know, kids get sick and they and they they push themselves and they want to see their friends, etc. Feeling well, we need to encourage them to stay home and it shouldn't be a penalty, similar with the adults. The question is, do we have that protocol in place? What if a person tests positive in one of our schools? Do we close down? Do we quarantine? I know we talked about contact tracing, but you have to quarantine if 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 the virus is in that building. The question.
Yeah, it's a variable response, to be honest with you. It depends on how many, you know, how many kids, where this happened. You know, one kid, no staff. You know, just feeling the symptoms but has to now go home to get the test. We don't necessarily make a decision until we until we get a positive. And then we get a positive, then we do follow a standardized procedure. But sometimes it can be, it can be a school, it can be a classroom. Again, it depends on contact tracing. So it's a it's a complex question. I don't just dump to 14 days, I wouldn't, based on, you know, one case or so. But there are several cases in one small district that was like 13, 16, 17 cases. One small district, then I think you do, you do have to make a decision affecting affecting the whole whole system. I think they just looked at it at the high school level. But for me, all of it's serious, all of it's serious, whether it's if it's adults bringing it into the school or or whenever, wherever it starts and and circulates, that's that's where we have to, you know, determine determine what what decision we'll make. So, no, that's a good question. I it's not bursting our bubble. I think you you got to talk to all the kids all the time, all the kids all the time, you know.
Thank you for that.
We have a program trust pays in Memphis. I I want I want I want kids to snitch on each other in in this regard as well. You know, I want I want I want them to tell on each other. Hey, man, Terrence is sick. He's sick as a dog. He ain't told nobody, but he's sick. He's in the bathroom throwing up right now, you know.
So the big party, 200 people was at the party over the weekend. No masks.
Dude is telling telling us everything because then we can take appropriate action, you know. And by the way, you'll see you'll see in Dr. Williams's presentation later, she's done a really good job around this issue in in terms of code of conduct. So thank you for that for that question. We'll we'll make a note to it. Darren, do you have anything to say about it? You you, you know, and you're reopening meetings about high school kids in particular? Because that is a different population and they're going through going through a lot. We know, we know what happens when kids get together, when they want to get together, when they want to have private parties at home, when they want to do a flash mob, everybody, everybody come to Hope's house, you know what I mean? On Friday afternoon. That that stuff happens. So what how do how do we help contain some of this stuff?
Earlier point, Dr. Cash, that's why it's very important that we do have the information that we get from the students or from the parents, because contact tracing will be necessary if there is a case that is confirmed, right? So the contact tracing, if students are within six feet of one another for 60 minutes, 60 consecutive minutes or more, their names are given to the Erie County Department of Health and they are mandated to quarantine. Now, when you are talking about shutting down the building, Dr. Cash, like he said before, he will definitely consult with the health advisory panel also to say, this is what our situation is and, you know, get the best medical minds around this along with Dr. Cash, because each case is different to decide what the next steps will be.
Yeah, yeah, that's well stated, stated better than I did. Thank you, Darren.
Jen had her hand up followed by Terrence.
Oh, okay.
Hi, everybody. So Kathy kind of touched on my question. And I'm trying to figure out, you know, if you're testing everybody and you're asking everybody, especially the students as they're coming in. You know, students aren't going to be that quick to say, yep, I'm I'm I was out of town or yep, you know what I mean? Like, nobody wants to say that while somebody's right directly behind them listening. What are what is like kind of the protocols we would have in order to have these conversations with students that they would feel comfortable? That's like, you know, kind of piggybacking and adding to Kathy's question. But then also, I'm I'm curious, I know I had texted some folks to find out just exactly where. Okay, you did good. He he ate all his dinner, everybody. But where does the family lia-
They have some dinner.
Where are the family liaisons where all this comes into play, right? And we're doing so many things across the board in every school. Do they have like in 80, in school 80, I was told there was, you know, a role for them? Is especially like getting updated information on the students? Maybe the family liaisons and student representatives for the schools are the ones having these kind of conversations with folks on a more private, you know, in studying or in a more secluded setting where they're not, you know, no one's going to put on blast if they're suffering these symptoms. Let's let's be real, no one's going to put that out there. So I I'm just wondering what is our kind of backup plan, knowing that, you know, it's it's not just about being embarrassed and there's so many factors that plays in. If somebody was to be like, yep, I was out of town and my grandma had it and I might be sick, what should I do? No one's going to say that. So that's kind of where I'm going with all this. And then again, like, family liaison role is, you know, I'm still unclear as to what that role is across the board? Or is it every school has a different, you know, a different role or they decide what those family liaisons do?
So that's a multi-pronged question. I think it's important. One, I I want to just take a take an effort at the overall thing that you and Dr. Kathy Brown are getting at, Jennifer. And that is, why we put so much emphasis on this social emotional learning part and this relationship part is we think that, you know, through family circle time sometimes, through our nurses, there's so many of our staff that have been trained to develop relationship, develop trust with our kids. And I'm hoping that one of these staff members, some, you know, the the student will feel comfortable enough to 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 talk to. Because we have to, we have to try to get inside what's going on with these children and families now that once we start to return. Because something we started way back at the beginning, I think Hope and others were concerned about is the 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 rise in domestic violence and domestic issues and abuse since we've been in COVID shutdown and even remote learning. It's just skyrocketed when you talk to pediatricians, healthcare specialists, and so forth. So I think colleagues, we've been trying to create spaces where it's safe, Tonda, and where where kids feel comfortable talking to, not everybody, because every kid is different. But maybe maybe it's a security personnel, maybe it's a food service personnel, maybe it's somebody, counselor, support staff specialist, teacher aide and assistant, so that we can understand what children are going through. And we want them to feel safe to do that, not a not a tattletale or not, you know, being uncomfortable around their peers to do it. So Tonda, can you say a little more? Because I think this is an important point that that board members are trying to get at. And I just want to, I guess all I can say is what kind of culture we're trying to create, but you can you can get more at the detail out of it.
Sure. So we just trained our security team, our entire security team in restorative practices and in building relationships. And we spent a lot of time prior to the start of the school year, training our teachers in this area also. We have trainings coming up for teacher aides and assistants. So we want to build that culture schoolwide, not just necessarily with the teacher, but with everyone. Because what Dr. Cash is getting at is that when children trust adults, they usually will tell you when they have concerns or they have questions about something, if there is trust that's established. And so that's really what all of the circle time and social emotional learning and the curriculum that we've implemented is focused on, building that kind of relationship where it's not punitive, we're trying to help. And we also know that we've got to work with parents too so that they understand we're trying to help save lives. This is this is serious business. So.
Yeah, yeah.
It's the main reason why we really pushed hard to make sure the teachers stayed with the students, that they had established such positive relationships already. And you'll see that many schools have really worked hard to try to either maximize the 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 family liaison or to build advisory programs where students are assigned in small groups to adults at the at the high school. But you'll see them all over the district, depending on where the school is and that type of implementation. But the main focus is on building those relationships and social emotional supports.
Colleagues, we have a trove of data. I was impressed with the reams of data, actually, when I just made a request about reach out and contacting students and connecting weekly, daily. You know, what are our staff doing in that regard? And they printed out reams of data that showed how many contacts are being made to the home, to the families, to the students on a weekly basis and sometimes daily, depending on the student, to 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 try to keep those connections. I've just been impressed overall of what staff have been trying to do to keep connected with their students. This is not easy. My biggest worry is not the students that are connected, it's the ones that aren't, the ones that aren't coming on every day, the ones that we're losing since the start of the school. Or maybe just come on a few times a week and then we don't see them again for a week or so. And so we're trying to build a program just around those students, for example. And some of those students are the ones that have been selected to these school-based plans. They 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 say, look, we got to, you got to come, we got to get you in person so we can help you, we're concerned. But those are good questions and that's the culture we're trying to build and and get get ready for. All right, I got one last piece. Did anyone, Kathy, is she on?
Yeah, there's a couple more hands. I don't know who went up first, Larry and Terrence.
Okay.
I don't know if the question is a union question or not, but if a teacher is asymptomatic and don't show any symptoms, is that teacher still allowed to teach virtually if they wish to? Or they have to take sick leave or sick time?
If they tested positive?
Yeah, they was asymptomatic and as I look it up, they don't know how long someone can remain in that condition. Could be a a long period of time, but if you don't show any symptoms. My question is, can that teacher still be allowed to teach virtually if they wish to? Or they have to use a sick leave or sick time? Can they teach from home?
Yeah, Jamie, I think I think they they stay at home under quarantine until they test negative again. Sometimes.
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Can you answer that more directly?
Yes, sir. So what has not changed in our district is if you don't feel well, stay home. That's something that has always been the expectation. What's different in this remote environment is if they're not feeling well enough to come to to work, but they feel well enough to work from home, they do work from home and then they don't need to use a sick day. So right now, our attendance is higher than we've ever seen because teachers, being able to work 100% remotely, are working 100% remotely. And there's no disruption to the students' education because they can log in from home. So we've seen increased engagement. Our teachers are very dedicated and supportive. And when they're asking to work remotely, they are working remotely. So that's something that we're able to accommodate, which is different. Because usually, if you don't feel sick, if you feel sick and you can't come in, you take a sick day. But they they're able to still work for the most part.
But Jamie, Jamie and Darren, the question I heard in Mr. Hurd's question was, I'm asymptomatic. My name, I'm a teacher. I've tested positive and I'm working remote at home because I don't I don't feel sick. Now, remember, we have staff coming in two to three days a week. So when does that teacher get to come back? get to come back? They, to me, they still have to do the 14 days or until they get a positive uh, from the- So that, explain that case.
You're absolutely right, sir. If they, they, if anyone who tests positive submits their test results to HR, that's our protocol. They notify us right away. They let us know if they're not feeling well and if they, because there's 10 sick days that's mandated to give people who are recovering from COVID. So if they let us know they're testing positive, they also let us know if they feel like they can work or if they're not feeling well. For the most part, they're just saying they want to work from home, they're asymptomatic and they cannot return until they have the 14-day quarantine and a a negative test. We get a copy of the negative test if someone's cleared and at that time they can return to work after the 14-day quarantine with a negative test.
Even even when they're asymptomatic?
They're able to work 100% remotely if they're asymptomatic, yes, sir.
Right. But I just want to be clear about that 14 days, because that's important.
It's very important, we follow the Erie County Department of Health guidelines and they have to stay quarantined, then they have to be cleared to return to work.
Thank you, Dr. Cash and Mrs. Warren.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, Larry Ann or Ann, Larry Ann, Dr. Reddard, also the last two hands, I see.
Go ahead, Ann. Uh, Dr. Cash, did you say you had, you had another item on this topic?
Um, yes, I just wanted to share an overview, sort of a 30,000-foot uh, back-to-b buildings checklist that I'm gonna make available to all our parents and our communities, it's gonna be up online. And uh, that's a useful, a a useful tool that I asked staff to put together and they did a pretty good job, it's it's a working document, if board members have any further suggestions for it, um, we'll continue to 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 modify it. But it's something you can use too, as board members, to share with your, with your constituents. So that was the last piece I wanted to share, yeah.
So my, my last question, and I think Hope really touched on this in our last board meeting. Um, you know, we've gotten to the point where we've worked out these plans from the buildings and parents are continuing to ask, okay, what are the next steps? When are we gonna start this this next phase in? Um, and I know the positive cases are rising and that is a an increasing concern and the the school closures are are happening throughout Western New York. Uh, but do we have, do you have a sense, Dr. Cash, on what next steps are from here? Now that we have these plans from the buildings?
Well, it's a two-part answer. First part is, and I just want you to think about it, what do you want? What do you want to happen? And I've asked you that before as a, as a consensus. What do you want to happen and when do you want to see these plans begin? Uh, that's, that's my question to you. Now, what I've directed staff to be prepared to do, if the conditions exist and have come down from what they are now and if the science is is saying uh, that it, that it's good, you know, that that we're safe to do it, that anywhere between back mapping from the um, uh, I had it in here, hold on. Because I've told the, I've told the team to be ready in two weeks. So two weeks from now, end of the first quarter, and it would be the 15th through the 1st of December, somewhere 15th to the uh, hold on. What is the 15th, is that a Sunday or Monday? The 16th through the 30th is my timeframe for this, 16th to the 30th. I'm prepared to do it, we will be prepared to do it. But again, people have to feel safe, they have to have all of the things that they need, the bus situations have to be worked out. And I have to feel like heading into the Thanksgiving, we're not, we're not going in the, continue to go in the wrong direction. That that's how I feel about it, I don't want to bring kids back in and staff, all staff in five days a week when we're in the middle of 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 this kind of uh, situation that we're in right now. Right now, it's it's just burning hot in my mind, so. But I'm prepared and the plan is to be between the 16th and the 30th of November uh, to start to execute these plans, all things and all conditions permissible. And I'll keep you updated on that, I can't commit to a specific timeline because I don't think it's it's wise to do it. But that's my timeframe, my timeframe.
So you're not talking about bringing children back before the Easter break, are you? I mean, the Christmas, I mean, the Thanksgiving break, are you?
Now, we went from Easter to Christmas to Thanksgiving.
I know, I'm exhausted. You know what I'm talking about, don't blame me.
No, I don't, I I prefer Easter.
You don't know that there's a break this month? You don't know that there's a break this month?
But here's the thing, um, from what I'm hearing about what could happen Thanksgiving, all of the advice, and I talked to the Health Advisory Commission, it's sort of saying you should wait till after the Thanksgiving uh, holiday, is what the advice is and started the early part of December. Um, but what I, what I told principals to do is be ready, is to be ready, because I don't know what the board and the community wants. And I'm prepared to do, oh, if the board were to say something different, then I try to execute uh, some of that. So that that's why I want this to be a consensus decision. My preference would be looking again at the conditions, let's see who gets into office, trying to get in the patter, I just sent my vote out there. And uh, we're trying to get this done. And then that'll, that'll, that'll give a whole new level of 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 hope to to when we can do this uh, safely and start to have a plan, start to have a plan. But, uh, you know, I'd like to hear from you. I just gave you my timeframe of what I'm prepared to do and now I want to hear from you. Does that, did that helpful, Larry, at all, I mean, or do you think it's, it's not?
That's helpful to me, that potentially we could begin our students within that timeframe. You know, given the circumstances, obviously, I think we need to make that-
16th to the 30th is when we'll be prepared to do it. Not a question would be, is it wise to do it?
Yeah.
And 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 again, I'll keep you right up to date and we'll talk, we'll, 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 we'll stay in constant communication, either email, phone calls, whatever, so that we're all on the same page when we do, when we do start, okay?
So I, I think, let's be a little bit clear at that, because I want to make sure that the board is informed prior to being in the newspaper. Okay, so I want to have, if we have to have a special meeting or whatever-
I agree, yeah.
Make sure that happens. The only, only question that I have, and I am exhausted, this has been, this is the time I normally take my vacation and I am just burnt right about now. Question is, COVID provided some support financially for cer- certain PPE equipment, did it not? Or certain- So why are we using the more, um, why are we moving to the next stage with this? Particularly in the buildings where we have a a large population of adults or whatever? Why aren't we using the modern equipment that's available out there? Uh, that we saw in a, in a small district like Salamanca? That you can walk into the foyer and it can take everyone's temperature all at one time and tell the people who has a fever and who don't have it? If this is being 75% or 85% reimbursed, why are we moving in that direction for this district? Particularly when we're planning on bringing our children back and having them each test individually by a nurse to see if they have a temp?
No, no, we, it's a both and, it's a both and. I think we need the individual ones, because it's fluid for kids all day to see how they're feeling. Some kids will test, you know, some kids' temperature will be high not because they have any symptoms, that they just, they just were hyped for a few moments before, that'd drive a kid's temperature up by one or, one and a half degrees. Uh, or it could be something else with Tylenol, that can, that they, some medication they've been on. So we're doing that, I think I told uh, staff to order some of these um, what are they called, Dan, the the large ones?
Flow scanners, so we did the uh, demo at MST and they are the flow scanners that you, right, correct.
Yeah.
One more thing, um, don't we have in our uh, uh, union contract a stipulation of that we have to inform our teachers during a certain time period before they come back? Jamie, are you still there?
No, we, we don't have to, we, we've talked to them and asked what, for their feedback. Um, to be courteous and to be thoughtful, to try to give people enough time to prepare childcare and other uh, considerations. So I'm, I'm want to be somewhere within a two-week to 30-day uh, notice around that, but that's not a requirement, it's a courtesy.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a, this is made, it's not a contractual requirement.
Okay, great, because I don't want to hear any, any nitty-gritty about that.
Okay, so Ann and Hope had a question.
I just had, can I, I just had a comment real quick, quick, Dr. Cash?
Sure.
Uh, just to sort of add to what you were saying, and I think Dr. Wright had brought it up earlier when she was talking about the plan and I I didn't get to comment on it, but I think it's a very well thought-out plan. And obviously, we can't uh, predict everything. It, we're not gonna know, we're not gonna know what the challenges are until we're actually doing it. And that's, that's one of the things that is so scary about this is, we're just not gonna know. And one of the things that she brought up was um, the possibility that we, we maybe jumped the gun a little bit on this and then we end up having to retract, like other districts have done. And and the impact of doing that and how it's negatively impacted the students, I mean, it's difficult enough, all of the adjustments they've had to make. Um, people have brought up all of the difficulties and the challenges with a hybrid model. But then for us to bring them back into the classroom and then have to take them out two weeks later is, we don't want to do that. So I agree with your caution, Dr. Cash, and I think it's the right decision. I think that we don't want the seesaw thing, because it's, 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 I think it's worse for the kids and it's also worse for the parents, having to plan and and they're trying to plan and then they think it's gonna be one way and then it's gonna be a different way. And I know you don't have control over this, I, I know you don't have a crystal ball and I know that you, you can't uh, know, but I think we should try to be as cautious as we can while we're moving forward to implement this.
Thank you for that. Now colleagues, let me give you some numbers just to put in your head. I know Sharon talks about this a lot with the smaller districts. Because as I told you, 98 districts in Western New York and most of them are a thousand students or 2,000 students, the great majority. So for here, what we did with this, with this uh, bandwidth of 100 students and then the staff coming in to support, the total number of students across all 60 schools is 4753, 4,753. Now the staff, you have to add the staff, and that's elementary and high school numbers of kids, 4753. The staff, because we're saying for all the staff to come and provide the support is 5,593. And when you add, and when you add the two together, that's 10,346. See? And that, that's larger than any district out there to start. So we, we may find we have to modify around this. Whether we modify around staff, whether we modify around students, I want to be able to start small so we can pressure-test it and get good at it and then be able to say confidently, we can bring in this many more in phase two and this many more in phase three. But I did want you to have these numbers because the principals have been very thoughtful and they've been, they've erred on the side of being more cautious, Dr. Evans Brown, than trying to say, oh yeah, let's just bring half the kids back and then we'll see, then we'll bring the other half back. And that's basically what a hybrid model does, a hybrid brings half the kids back two days out the week, and the other half, the other two days. And that's where you're gonna, I think you'd get really quickly into a high number of cases and have to shut down again and and be completely disruptive to to too many students and families. This way, I think a smaller number, but a doable number. Uh, and then we can do the overlay of transportation, get them proper amount of equipment and the right equipment that everybody needs and wants and then let's, let's do this, let's do this and see, and and do it safely. But you're right, I cannot guarantee zero risk on any of this. There will be risk and uh, unfortunately, because we, we're just not all following all the rules. See? Truth be told, Doctor, Ms. Cotman alluded to it, there are, there are adults behaving badly out there. And and it's not just the kids here. We thought it would be kids, but there's a lot of adults behaving poorly. I look out my window, not gonna tell you where I live, but I look out my window and and the bars right there on Chippewa are open till four, 4:00 AM. And there's adults going in and out of there um, all night with no masks on. And I'm tempted to go down there and take pictures, see if I got any staff members down there. But um, I'm just telling you, I'm just telling you, you gotta, this thing is not, it's, it's not, it's not under control. We're not all following the same rules, is what I'm saying. And what the schools are saying is, in order for them to do, be safe and do their job right, they really do need all of the adults and of course, all of the children and all of the family to 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 do the basic rules. Wear a mask, stay socially distanced and keep your contacts really, really tight, really, really tight. And then we can, we can stay healthy. But short of that, the risk goes up accordingly.
You haven't even mentioned the flu, Dr. Cash. We are going into the flu season.
I, I, I mentioned it in this next piece that I probably won't get to today. But flu vaccines are important to take as well. But what, what the, what the pediatricians and the, and the staff say, the health experts, is that we may be able to mitigate the flu better than in prior seas- uh, years if we keep these masks on and keep our distance and and wash our hands on a regular basis. That's how the flu is transmitted as well. So let's just get more disciplined about this and it'll help our children, it'll help our children. All right, I'd like to finish so then um, so that we can go on to the other two committees. Colleagues, I would like you to now go back to the slide. Mike, if you could put up the discussion slide and what you'll see there is reopening checklist. And then Eleanor, I'd like you to work with Mike to go through, here it is, the back-to-the-b buildings checklist. Just give us at a high level, colleagues, this is an item or a tool that we'll put online, you can use it in social media, on your websites and on your social media. Uh, it gives a high level of what we're gonna do next, sort of the plan that's coming next. So it answers Larry's question a little bit and it'll give the place where you as a board can go on and uh, look up the rest of these plans. Parents can choose to look at the plans for their school and they can help, it'll help inform them on whether they want to come back and be part of that group if invited or not. And uh, so Eleanor, take us through very quickly so we can conclude this part of the, of the evening.
Certainly, thank you, Dr. Cash, low board members. Um, so this checklist, we, we tried to think of a, you know, dozen things that would be most important to know, top of mind, just a quick reference. Uh, registration, we want parents to know that we're always accepting new students at, for enrollment and and they can and they should uh, register them for this school year, so that was our, our first bullet. Um, the return to in-person classes, this will probably become a little bit more detailed as time goes on. Again, it's a fluid document and that will, that will be depending, but this is a, just a general uh, information to let, to let people know what to expect and also what their part is, that second paragraph is, is what parents would do. and also what their part is. That second paragraph is, is what parents would do uh, as, as their children came back. Notification process, as always, we've been very, uh, active with our robocalls, and, um, we will, we'll, we'll let people know in multiple ways, uh, what, what to expect for the, the phase in of, of in-person learning so that everybody's prepared and on the same page. Cleaning and disinfecting, of course, as that already came up in the meeting tonight, that's always gonna be top of mind.
Yeah, move it forward, Eleanor. Move it forward.
Sure. Oh, okay. Uh, so we'll, we'll be doing that. Uniforms and facial coverings, that will tell people what to expect there. Of course, we'll have masks if children don't. Hand washing and sanitizing, we've always, uh, stressed hand washing, now more than ever. Meals and water, children will get their meals as they always have. And, uh, we will have drinking water available that people from food service will actually fill for the children. We're encouraging people to bring bottles. We'll probably get some donations in that respect, too. Devices, uh, that the IT department would like children to know if they're gonna be transporting their devices, and a lot of this will be up to teachers in the classroom, but they're expected to come fully charged and protected for travel. Contact information, we want parents' contact information updated constantly anytime a number changes in address so that we can get in touch with them, and then there are the numbers where they can get in touch with us. Transportation, that was already touched on in the meeting, too. Uh, we, we will hone that as we go. School supplies, that will be up to every school. Uh, obviously, children are gonna need to bring things in this year. And immunizations and flu vaccines, uh, as, as Tanja, Dr. Williams was saying, that's always, uh, that's always important, and it's also a, a state requirement. Mr. Hurd, I, I saw your hand up.
Yes, um, quickly, uh, I know there's an app that been downloaded to some phones. Um, I don't know if we can download as a district, that it, it actually, um, tells you if you have been in contact with someone or, um, been around someone, um, for a long period of time that, that has contracted the virus. I know it works off your GPS and, and privacy acts, laws and things like that that may apply to it, but, uh, I don't know, we've looked into something like that also?
I think, uh, not.
Hello?
Darren, let Eleanor know she's probably frozen.
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. Hurd, that, that app is from, uh, New York State. Uh, the governor started it, I don't know, a few weeks ago. I thi, I, I think that's the one you're referring to.
Yeah, Google had one, and, um, I know that one was downloaded to our phones, but it wasn't downloaded to my personal phone. So I was wondering if that was, um, universal, or if it's something that we can utilize, a tool we can utilize as a district with, um, working with our kid phones also, student, student phones, teachers. Let's, uh, for, for the sake of time, let's just look into it later, see if we can.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the question. Myra, is that something you can answer?
Um, well, I'll need to find out exactly what the app is. Um, I guess it would be something that the district would have to endorse and socialize with our students and staff members, um, so that they can load the app on their phone. Um, if it is something that we want, like on the iPads, we could potentially push that out, um, to the, to those devices. But if you're talking about a personal cell phone, um, that would be something that the parents and students would have to do for themselves. But if we as a district decide on something that we would like to endorse, we, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, are we gonna have portable, uh, uh, hand washing stations di, uh, different places in our district?
Just sinks inside the school.
Sink?
Yeah. We, we'll have sanitizing, uh, stations in a lot of places, but to actually go wash your hands, it'll have to be in, in bathrooms, in sinks, and in some classrooms that have sinks. So colleagues, you can see the rest of this information, including your immunizations and flu vaccine, which some of you alluded to, transportation. Any suggestions that you have about this, uh, please send them, uh, forward to us, to Darren, and, uh, we'll get it into this. Darren, maybe CC, Eleanor, and we'll, uh, we'll get it in. All right, colleagues, that's, that's all we have tonight on this topic. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cash.
Thank you. Done.
Dr. Kathy Evans-Brown.
I. You, Terrence, um, with the next section, I don't have my agenda in front of me.
I think Dr. Cash will just send it back to you, Dr. Evans-Brown, if you wanted to wrap up and end your committee officially, and then we'll go into educational support.
Okay, thank you, everyone who presented today. You did a wonderful job, very detailed. Um, I concur with my colleagues that, uh, we are looking forward and cautious about bringing our little darlings back into the buildings. Um, that if you've done a phenomenal job, and we look forward to, well, the board has some, um, about, and because Dr. Cash lastly mentioned that between the fifteenth, the sixteenth of December through the thirtieth.
November.
November, why did I put December? Check that. November sixteenth through the thirtieth, he and his team will be prepared to put it in place. And so we probably will have another conversation at our next meeting prior to that time, correct? That we can, no?
No. That's why I think Ms. Cotman said, keep you informed.
For?
Because the next meeting is the board meeting. I think that's the eighteenth of November.
Correct.
Prior to that me, meeting, then I think the board need to really think about how we want to proceed with this initiative.
Yeah. Give us some feedback, colleagues. It's okay to send us a little note, send us a detailed piece, and send it to Darren, send it to me, so we can have a look at your thoughts on this matter. That'd be, that'd be great.
So that is what the board will do. Um, and so thank you all. You did a wonderful job, very detailed information. A lot of thought put into it, and you considered everything, actually. This is a pandemic, and we have to use caution. So that wraps up the, this section of the student achievement. And I toss the, uh, torch to Darren.
Thank you, Dr. Evans-Brown, and commend all of the staff as well. Thank you. Um. Now, colleagues, I think under support, Darren, there was one item about the code of conduct, is that correct?
The Code of Conduct Addendum for, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one.
So colleagues, I'll, I'll do what you, what you want to do. That was a long time. We, we're prepared to go, go right on into it. Um, or we can take a, a brief break. I wouldn't recommend a long one, more than, no, no more than three minutes, maybe. What would you prefer to do, Terrence?
Um, if anyone needs a, a brief break, um, two or three minute break, just, um, raise your hand and we can go right into a break. Okay. Uh, it looks, it looked like, um, we have a couple, so let's take a three minute break. The time is now seven forty-four. Let's say we meet back by, um, seven fifty.
Oh, Lord, you doubled it. We'll be here at one o'clock.
Seven forty-nine?
No, come backwards.
Uh, just give them a couple of minutes and we'll meet back.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to eat.
See, Dr. Cash, seven forty-nine.
You're right. That's you and me, though.
Yeah, they're coming in.
Okay.
I heard seven forty-nine. I was sitting right here.
Who were those cute kids behind you, Terrence? Those yours or your grandkids?
Uh, two, two of my, two of my granddaughters.
Oh, that's beautiful.
Thanks, thanks, yeah.
Grandchildren are special, aren't they?
Very special, very special. Yeah, we, uh, that's why we work and do the things that we do.
Why this election so important for our grandkids? All right, let's see. Tanja, I'm calling you. Come on.
I'm ready.
I know you are.
I'm ready.
Do you have, um, Mike, ready to put your presentation up, Tanja, or do you have it from your desk?
Uh, no, I'm hoping that Mike can put it up.
Mike can, he has it. I will call him right now.
Let Mike know.
Thanks, Mike. Here we go.
Okay, I don't, wait a minute. Terrence, wait for some of your colleagues.
Yeah, I'm waiting for, um, we just have a couple more that should be logging on.
Well, let them know we're ready.
I'm here. I'm just not visible right now.
Now, Darren, is this the, the main piece for this, uh, committee?
Yes, it is. Because the thirteen-page document was emailed to the board also, but this is the highlight, the PowerPoint presentation.
Right. I wanted the board to have the Code of Conduct Addendum and these slides.
Correct.
Earlier. Okay.
Okay. Um, I guess we get started. Um, quickly, I would, I would like to say that the Buffalo Public Schools has an outstanding administrative staff, you know, that works together, and, um, I spoke with a couple of the board members from other districts saying, you know, that reopen. And, and, and the language that they send is that all the protocols that this district is using, you know, they didn't use any of that. You know, it's about reopening, getting kids back in, back in seats and, and trying to promote education, and a lot of them end up closing schools, you know, because of, of COVID, parents, you know, and the spread of it in their district. So I'd just like to congratulate this district first for all of, uh, preventive measures that they're taking and being, uh, precautious, you know, with our children and, and moving ahead with education in different ways. So thank you, district, for, for work that you're doing, and, and I'm hearing that all over, um, uh, Western New York and other parts of the country. Um, uh, to start off, Educating Support Committee this evening is, uh, seven fifty-two. And, um, quickly, you know, there have been a lot of social, um, changes that were made in our country since March of two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the Buffalo Public School District has worked very hard to meet the needs of each and every student, teacher, administrative staff, stakeholder, including community members, um, um, that all reside in the city of Buffalo. Uh, these actions couldn't be achieved without a strong school administrative staff, volunteers in our community, and strong community partners. As we prepare for the possible reopening of Buffalo Public Schools and our continued practice of remote learning, stakeholders and districts found it necessary to, uh, modify and amend the Buffalo Public School Code of Conduct so that they can reflect to today's times, challenging times. Now, just quick, another, um, thing is that the Buffalo Public Schools, the district remains committed to providing a safe and culturally linguistic, uh, inclusive, trauma, trauma-enforced and responsive school environment where all students have access to high-quality education standards based, based on education. And also says that, um, where all school and the district staff may deliver educational services and support without disruption or interference. A responsibly, responsible behavior by our students is very important as we move forward with the remote learning phases of, um, of education and looking towards, um, and school. So right now, um, Dr. Tanja Williams has been working very hard with the Code of Conduct with other, other, uh, stakeholders throughout the community and this district and the board about, um, how to move forward through these times of COVID. So this district felt the necessary right now to, um, to give the community, um, and the board a demonstration of, of what the Code of Conduct may look like in the future as we go and, we continue with COVID-nineteen. So Dr. Tanja Williams, I'm sorry, um, Dr. Cash?
Yeah, no problem. Thanks, Doc, uh, Mr. Hurd. We appreciate it. Uh, Dr. Tanja Williams has done a, a great job putting together four, uh, maybe five or six slides that sort of give the high overview of the approach to our Code of Conduct philosophy during COVID-nineteen, and, uh, also has included the full addendum that her team and others have worked so hard on, uh, including all of the cabinet and principals and admin. and admin, other administrators and teachers are on her team as well. So, Dr. Williams, let's, uh, go through this and make any main points that you want to make, uh, around this important issue.
Certainly, thank you, Dr. Cash. Uh, Board President Kotman and Chair Hurd, board members, um, Dr. Cash, and all colleagues, good evening. Tonight, I'm going to be presenting, uh, the Code of Conduct addendum. Um, the board already approved our overall Code of Conduct. This addendum does not replace the Code of Conduct that we have in place that was approved in twenty fifteen, sixteen. Rather, it is an addition to that because we right now are in different times. And so different time call for different actions. And so I want to share with the board that this is a very well-thought-out document and that it has had input, uh, from various stakeholders, including, um, cabinet-level members, division heads, um, district-level staff, school-building leadership that were selected by, um, their, uh, union president, BTF representation that was also selected by their, um, leadership, parents who are, uh, parent leads, um, who are members of parent congress. Either they themselves participated or, uh, they had representation or designees that participated as well as community members. Uh, we've gotten feedback from the Juvenile Justice Group with the Community Foundation. Um, we shared some high-level, uh, pieces with the Social Emotional Learning Reopening Committee. And yes, Monday with, uh, the reopening committee that Dr. Brown Hall, um, oversees. Um, and it's also been presented to parent congress. And I share all of that just to share that, um, it is a document that, you know, has had a lot of, uh, feedback and input. I want to give a special thanks to Board Member, um, Larry Scott, who shared, um, kind of what the template was for, uh, this work. So thank you very much, Board Member Scott, for sharing some of, uh, your ideas and your work. So the overall goal is that our, um, addendum would be less punitive and that you would see an increase in restorative support for our children. Next slide, please. So the need for why we have to have, um, an addendum, why did we need to do an addition at this point? There are really two big reasons. The first is that we're experiencing something with our global health pandemic that we've never experienced before. And it has required us to modify how learning is happening. So learning has not necessarily been happening, you know, in brick-and-mortar sec, sessions. Uh, they've been hot, happening remotely. And so because of that, there was the need for us to think about safety and security for our children, families, and staff um, in different ways. The second piece is that there's something that is happening nationally, nationally. Uh, there's an ongoing mobilization against all forms of systemic racism. And it's impacted our children and our families. It's impacted them on social levels, emotional levels, and possibly even academic levels. And so we wanted to make sure that in our Code of Conduct, we're cognizant of that, we're understanding of that. The language that we're using in our addendum reflects that as well as the supports that we're providing for students. The Code of Conduct applies at all times. That means that whether we are remote, whether we're hybrid, or whether we're full brick-and-mortar, the Buffalo Public Schools Code of Conduct applies. The goal of the Code of Conduct, and this is quite a bit, but, you know, it aligns perfectly to our education bargain. And our mission is that we're providing a safe, cultural, and linguistically welcoming, trauma-informed, and restorative learning environment for all of our students, regardless of whether it is a remote learning environment, hybrid, or full brick-and-mortar. The goal of this addendum is to ensure responsible behavior by all of our students, school, and district personnel, as well as community partners, parents, caregivers, and even visitors to the school. So there are sections that are included in the addendum that you've received that speak specifically to each of those enti, entities. Next slide, please. So seven of the very high level, this is the thirty-thousand-foot view. Seven of the, uh, pieces that we added to the addendum include adhering to all CDC and Department of Health Safety protocols. And what we're really talking about there is all of our children and staff on every day doing everything that they can to ensure safety. So the temperature readings are necessary, wearing of mask is necessary, utilizing respiratory etiquette, uh, social distancing, proper hand washing, not imparting bodily fluids like spitting on one another. Those are all things that are necessary and they show up in this addendum. Technology measures and supports. What we're talking about there is technology use. In other words, um, using devices that are Buffalo Public School property specifically for academic uses. Um, also care for devices and not selling or intentionally destroying devices. Uh, we're looking at making sure that children are demonstrating safe and respectful, responsible behaviors when they're utilizing their devices and not using them to intimidate or harass or engage in any form of cyberbullying. Um, not taking pictures or anything like that. Those are all legal crimes if they happen. So some of that shows up in our addendum. The computer camera expectation piece is something that, um, some of our parents felt very, very strong about uh, because we know that during these remote times, um, staff have a glimpse into children's homes. And so, um, one of the things that Myra's group, um, has trained teachers on to work with children on is to be able to modify their backgrounds to respect privacy, um, in the homes of our families. So we wanted that to show up. Um, if in fact there is something that is seen in a child's home, certainly we follow up, but we do it in a restorative and a respectful way where we're valuing, um, what's happening with parents, you know, in the home, in their personal homes. Honesty and wellness is a big piece. Um, we want parents to have responsibility and to know and understand the importance of keeping their children home when they're ill, presenting with illness, if someone in the home has been positively, um, uh, identified with COVID nineteen. We want parents to notify the school. That's a responsibility that we're looking for parents to have. The dress code piece, um, we're really talking there about the issue of hoodies. Uh, that's an issue that has elicited a lot of, um, discussion. And in the past, uh, the wearing of a hoodie could escalate to the point where it became an out-of-school suspension. Under this addendum, um, it has been, um, downgraded to a Level One infraction, which means that there is a discussion with the teacher only if it is causing a distraction, only if it's causing a distraction. And during the time of remote learning, because we don't know home situations and so, you know, we, we don't know what temperatures are in homes or any of that. So when it's in a remote session, um, there really should be no discussion at all if a child is wearing a hoodie. So we're, you know, we're very glad that we were able to do that. Uh, the issue of vaping, Code of Conduct was initially passed in twenty fifteen, sixteen. Vaping really wasn't, um, an issue, and it is now. And, you know, it's a highly addictive, um, dangerous activity that affects brain, the brain. It increases chances for cancer. And so you will see that vaping does show up, um, in this Code of Conduct addendum. And finally, what you will see is that, um, progressive discipline is really stressed. So we don't jump to a Level Four, um, which is the most extreme, uh, punishment that could happen that, you know, any principal could implement unless it is something that is extremely, extremely dangerous. We start with a Level One, which entails a teacher having a conversation with a student. It doesn't require an office disciplinary referral. It is a teacher having a conversation with a student and possibly a parent. It could move to a Level Two, which then includes our SST teams, uh, working with the child. I'll talk a little more about that. And from there, it go, it could escalate to a Level Three, which would be a short-term, and then a Level Four. But there are steps, progressive steps that have to happen, um, prior to getting to a Level Four. And even if it does get to a Level Four, if there's a violation that mandates a Level Four, um, outcome, when children come back, we want to have a restorative conference where we welcome them back into the learning environment. Okay. Next slide, please. So the theory of action piece with respect, um, to the Code of, uh, Conduct Addendum, um, really talks about for schools to be truly safe, culturally and linguistically inclusive, welcoming, trauma-informed, and restorative during this particular time, there are three things that really need to happen. This is really important. The board, uh, reviewing this document and hopefully approving this addendum, um, at our next board meeting, that's the first step. But after that, that's where the real work comes into play with making sure that there is teaching or professional development for all of our staff. That includes teachers, teacher aides, transportation folks, um, even front office staff, as well as teaching our children and our parents, uh, what's included in this addendum. And then not just doing a one-and-done where we're just doing a one-day professional development and it's done, but we have to continuously reinforce what this addendum entails. And finally, providing the support for all staff and students if that's needed. So that's really what our, uh, theory action, theory of action is, um, talking about. The Buffalo Public Schools is committed to issues surrounding equity, social, emotional, and physical wellness, nonviolence, and respect for all members of the learning community. Our focus here is really on ensuring the wellness of the whole child. Next slide. So everyone has some responsibility in this addendum piece. Our staff, we are expecting our staff, as well as our community partners, to support the expectations of social distancing, wearing masks, um, and encouraging hand washing. We heard Dr. Cash earlier talk about how there are some adults that are not engaging in, um, safe behavior. We're expecting, that's a responsibility, that we're expecting that on every single day, all of our staff are, um, engaging in safe behaviors. Our students, we're expecting the same things. We're expecting that as we're teaching them and reinforcing and supporting them, wearing masks, practicing social distancing, respiratory adequate, um, washing of hands, all of those things are happening daily. And for our parents, there's a huge piece, and this, this aligns to our education bargain. We need for our parents to be also reinforcing and instructing children on the importance of social distancing, keeping children home when they are ill. If a child gets ill in school, coming to get the child, making arrangements to come and to, um, get the child and get them the help or support that they need, getting them to a doctor's office. Um, and then reporting to the child's teacher if the child is ill or if, if someone in the home has COVID nineteen, um, that they are reporting that information to the child's teacher. We're looking for parents to take extra care of these wonderful BPS technology tools that we have. Um, you know, there's a limited supply of them and we need help from our parents to make sure that children are taking all precautions to keep those, um, tools safe. Next slide. So I just want to go over each one of those areas, that teaching, um, the reinforcing and then the support. So as far as, uh, the teaching and what that's going to look like or entail, we want, as soon as this addendum has been passed, we want parents, we want teachers, we want administrative staff reading and becoming familiar with this addendum and really getting to know it. We want them to ensure that all of our children from pre-K through grade twelve, that is shared with them in a way where they get it, they understand it, and they are aware of the expectations. Uh, we want to allow our students time and space to discuss and write and talk about their lived experiences, emotions, and feelings if they have had, um, difficulty, if they're having, if they've, you know, um, experienced a Level One or Level Two violation, that again, it's progressive and we give them time and space to talk about it, to reflect on it. Those are all restorative practices and we want to make sure that we're teaching children how to do that, how to effectively use their voice. Uh, we want, we're telling students explicitly, teachers are telling students how to report incidents that they may see or experience themselves of harassment, intimidation, or discrimination. Um, we will be explicitly reviewing and working with the associates of school leadership to make sure that every single one of their building leaders, principals, assistant principals, even interns in the schools know and understand the contents of, um, the addendum. The addendum will be publicly posted, um, so that everyone will have access to it. All of our families will have access to it. Uh, we plan to provide online presentations and trainings for parents so that they can access them um, as many times as they need to, uh, in the comfort of their own homes to understand this document. And we've already begun, um, to talk with our school-based community partners to explain their roles in this addendum. So all of those are entities for the teaching piece that we talked about. Next slide, please. So the reinforcing part, so this comes after we've done an initial training. We've done an initial talk about it. And the reason we're doing that is because we want to standardize, we want to have a standardized way that discipline and behavior is dealt with in our schools. Um, we want it to be fair, we want it structured, and we want it very clear. And once we do that, um, we will be looking at things like relevancy. This is where, uh, the work of Dr. Morrell comes into play. Uh, we've taken a look at our data over the last couple of years and admittedly, there have been some disproportionate outcomes when it comes to suspensions. And so we'll be working with her to make sure that we keep at the forefront the needs of the children, the relevancy for how discipline is happening in our district. And where necessary, there will be modifications, uh, to this plan. Of course, the board would need to approve any modifications to this addendum or to any Code of Conduct, but there may be a necessity to continuously modify. In addition to that, um, in creating the addendum, things like the education bargain, which requires that there's a partnership between parents, between the community, and between our school staff is happening. Our mission of putting children and families first to ensure high academic achievement for all was at the forefront of it. The board recently, I believe, um, passed an equity regulation that requires that everything that we're doing, um, equity is at the center of it. This addendum is no different. And ultimately, what we are focusing on is a whole learning community that is focused on equitable whole-child wellness. That's what is at the core of this addendum. Next slide, please. And then when we do all of those things, we've taught what the addendum entails. We're constantly, every day, all reinforcing it in a structured way, um, that's very clear. We know that there will still be the need for continued support. So this will be a fluid, um, again, a fluid document. Um, a professional development plan will be, uh, created that's, again, is going to be inclusive of all school staff. of all school staff, district staff, community partners. We want everyone knowing and understanding what the contents of this addendum entails. Um, all of our documents have to be translated when we talk about inclusiveness. That's a big piece of it. They have to be able to access and understand what's in the document. Um, the cross-functional support that has to happen, there's not a single department within the district that this code of conduct addendum will not touch. So it's important that all of our district staff also, um, be on the same page. And then assuring that all disciplinary measures are fair, progressive, and restorative with opportunities for healing. That's another central part. That's what we want for the children. It's not about being punitive. It's about really helping our children to be, uh, responsible young people because one day, you know, they're going to be sitting in all of our seats, we hope, and, um, making decisions. And it's our role at this point to help prepare them to be able to do that. But we got to do it in a way that's safe, um, in our schools. So, next slide, please. So at this time, I'm prepared to take questions and have discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Are you, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, I'm here, I'm back. Apologize. Uh, we had a couple of hands that was raised. Uh, thank you, Dr. Tonja Williams, for, um, your presentations. A great presentation on the code of conduct. And I believe the first hand was raised was, um, President Belton Kotman.
Okay.
Oh, this, uh, a couple of questions. This code of conduct, this is just, we've been waiting on a complete document about the code of conduct, the revision of it. So is this part of the ongoing work that you're doing? Or is this the piece that, you know, and I think Eric Rossiter started it a while back. Is this part of that or what is, where are we with this, uh, timeline? Is this, is this it? Or this, is there another piece coming with this or what?
This is the addendum that focuses really on where we are right now as a school district in a remote learning environment. So the overall code of conduct work, uh, we started about three years ago. I think we even had a board, um, panel, um, at one of the community centers, uh, that you worked with us on, uh, Board President Kotman. So we still have a lot of that, um, data and information. But again, we're in such a different space, um, right now than we were even then. You know, things that we may have discussed then, some are relevant still, some have advanced and have changed. So there will be work that needs to happen to really look at that whole big document and, um, updating that whole big document. This is an addendum for until we... Okay, okay.
So, um, you referenced racism. And I, I guess from my perspective, I, 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 I think in a code of conduct, I think more about disproportionality, racism. Um, and I'm, I'm trying to balance that out in my mind that I think that since this is a document that covers all students, I don't, I, 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 I'm concerned about using the word racism versus disproportionality.
Okay.
That it borders both because it, you don't have to have a race to be disproportionately treated a certain way. The data will support that. And so I, 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 I would like for you to take a look at that, please. I had also wanted, um, ask the question about how long would it take the training to happen? Possible that you can do, uh, some pods, tests, or some virtual learning things or whatever so that we can make sure that, uh, staff is, um, has exposure to this as soon as possible because we, it took quite a while to roll out the code of conduct and its training and time of, of the essence. So I'm, I'm concerned about that. The piece that I'm seeing that I'm concerned about that's missing is the, the, um, checks and balance piece. And you may have it in your document, but you didn't talk about it today. And that piece I'm really referencing is, is that when, um, happens in a disproportionate way or a violation happens in regards to the code of conduct, okay? Where's the checks and balances that are in place to monitor that? And what I'm talking about is typically you had a department downtown that was saying, this is not a suspension, this is not suspendable, we're sending that child back. But I didn't see the piece that regulated that. So if a person has sent down 10 kids under this particular stipulation, where's the checks and balance that this person receives some sort of remedial help to make them understand what they're doing? So that's what I'm concerned about, rights. And one of the things that I wanted to see in, in anything that we did was to at least list, yeah, uh, uh, For Student Act as well as FERPA, that those would be two items that would be listed up front, that we, with anything that we start moving forward, that we empower our children by saying, this is what we expect you to do, but you do have rights as well. Okay? And so I, I think we're missing that piece when we don't empower our students with the knowledge that they need to move them to the next level. And, and that's basically, um, I'm concerned about patterns that exist inside buildings and that we don't have some way of monitoring what's going on and who's, who's doing those things so that we can make sure that they get, uh, professional development. But overall, I think it's a very great, a very, uh, very good, uh, uh, addendum to this. It's a very difficult, um, the, the code of conduct, uh, to amend it is very difficult. And I know you found that to be the case, but I'm glad that you did. The only other piece that I did not see on there was, uh, and maybe you have it, is the piece about, uh, uh, electronic devices, um, while in classroom or while, uh, we're doing that, uh, piece because, oh, uh, that children sometimes are tuning out classroom. And, and I don't know if you dealt with that piece in there about what the expectations are if we're in a virtual world, what we expect for you to do. Man, I'm very pleased to see that you've moved forward to this. I know it took a lot of work and I know you have a lot on your plate. And, um, I just commend you and your staff for all the great work that you're doing under your leadership. You're doing a great job, of course, you know, under the, uh, chief, you know, head honcho, uh, Criner Cash and all.
Oh, Lord. You really, it must be your birthday. Thank you.
Coming up, I expect a gift. Like, we're still waiting on our gifts, Dr. Cash, don't stop.
I got them, I got them, I got them for you.
Hey, don't get started now.
Now, now, one thing I do want to say, because I think that point about tracking people to see if they're improving when they, you know, may, there may be a pattern of disproportionality occurring in a school. All of these trainings, Tonja, and that Fatima's been doing, that you've been doing, disproportionality training, trauma-informed care training, culturally and linguistically responsive teaching training. All of these pieces, we then, now I have Ebony Bullock that's come on to the OSA, uh, as the chief of, of that department. And she's going to be looking at this data in what we call a cross-analytic way so that we can start to see if there are transgressors that are continuously disproportionately suspending students. We, we, we're going to have, um, you know, we're going to, we're going to take measures, uh, on that. Uh, so I think that's, that's exactly the right question. And it, it can't be tolerable any longer, you know? So once we now have all these trainings in place, all this hard work and focus on equity and cyberbullying, regular bullying, we, we can't let staff continue to, to treat our students in ways that are disproportionate. While we still hold, uh, students accountable, because, you know, students can, can do things that aren't acceptable either, and we still do have to hold, hold those behaviors accountable. So I just think we're continuing to make progress is the point. We're not, um, not listening and hearing what, what, what you're saying. We want to keep improving in this area because it's very important. And now's the time to teach, to teach young people. Because if you don't get woke, if you're not woke now, you ain't going to get woke. We gotta, we gotta teach them all of the things they need to do in order to, to be the next generation of leaders and not to get set back 50, 200 years, you know? So this is all part of that plan, all part of that effort for our young people.
Thank you.
Okay, um...
Next we have, uh, next we have, uh, I believe this, um, Jennifer McCosey.
Thank you. So the code of conduct, just for clarity's sake, and, and I've received about three text messages since we started talking about this. Um, I myself, and, and I'm glad that Larry was able to give you some of the stuff that was worked on way before McCosey becoming a board member. Worked as a individual on this as a parent, as a community member. And it's been revised and tweaked and revised again, I think. And I think that for clarity's sake, we need to, because we refer to it often, we use it when we're in school, you know, referring to the code of conduct, referring to how we use it, whether we're actually using it or that we have it in place. Um, the implementation strategy is, is really unclear. Is it by district? Is it, you know, across the board, all 60 schools? I understand there's different levels. I've asked this question quite a few times and I don't know, um, I, I do answers that are sufficient, but now that we're making changes to it, I would have liked to be able to know, like, where we were clearly before we're making the changes. And I understand it's a living document, but, you know, is this going to be across the board, uh, implemented? You know, uh, it's been very clear that the code of conduct has been used as a tool in several scenarios in several different schools. And some schools are, have not even really used it or, or don't promote it or don't let the students know that they have this option, this tool to refer to. So I'm looking to see, um, you know, and you don't have to say it now, yeah, I'm sure, you know, because we're still, it's a working document. But when we do implement it, I'd like to see that there's more communication around where it's going to be implemented and that it'd be, and for equity's sake, across the board. So one school doesn't utilize it and others do not. Um, everybody is held accountable. The checks and balances piece is very important. I'm glad President Kotman brought that up. Not saying it doesn't exist, it does to a certain level. But when you have schools that are using it and schools that are not, then it just blows all that out of the window. And with all the work that you've put into this, I'd really like to see that we highlight this as a real, living, breathing tool that we use, you know, hourly if needed.
So we know that, um, the implementation piece, that's, that's the challenge. And so that's why, um, in creating this, one of the things that, you know, I talked a little bit about, I didn't go too deep into it, but is the professional development plan. There has to be a plan, um, on who, when, because I believe Dr. Cash's expectation is that it is implemented equitably in all 60 schools. And that all staff know and understand the expectations of it. Um, President Kotman, uh, shared that, you know, we already began this process a couple of years ago under Dr. Rossiter whereby, um, when children were, um, referred to, um, pupil personnel services, that it really had to meet the standard of a level four infraction. No more could it be something that was a low-grade, um, infraction and it ended up as a long-term suspension. And when that did happen, uh, we worked very closely with that office to make sure that those suspensions were worked on with the principal. They were sent back to the principal and then we worked together with the principal to see how we could get support without it being a long-term suspension because it didn't meet the level or the threshold for a level four infraction. So we started that work, um, a couple of years ago and it has continued. But certainly, um, the code, the plan, the actual professional development plan, uh, will be comprehensive. And, you know, it's going to have to be rolled out. We can't, you know, get to everyone necessarily immediately. But the good thing about it being online is that I think we will touch more people in a quicker way than we could if it were just face-to-face. And, you know, as Dr. Cash shared, it's going to entail working with different departments, Dr. Morell's department, Dr. Botticelli's depart, Ms. Botticelli's department. So it's going to be kind of a cross-functional group of us making sure that, you know, everybody is touched and it's not a one and done. You know, it's not just, we do one professional development training and we expect, you know, that everybody's gotten it, but it's going to be reinforced and support will be provided. We have coaches that can go out and provide support to SST teams and to teachers where needed.
If we could just have, like, the communication strategy around when you start making these moves and efforts, then we can relay that to the folks who are, you know, the folks who are right now. Like, I worked on this how many years ago? It's not in every school. Like, that is literally a test. So we can be more clear and I can have the talking points to keep everybody up to date with it, no matter how long it takes. The efforts are clearly there and this, this specific, um, presentation proves that immensely. So thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, thank you once again, um, Jennifer McCosey. Uh, next hand we have is Larry Scott. Mr. Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Hurd. Dr. Williams, excellent work, very comprehensive. Um, glad you added the, um, information on cameras. Um, that was something that we initially excluded in Canton and realized we needed to add some language to that before the board approved it in Canton. Um, you mentioned the hoods and the hats. And, you know, this has been an ongoing power struggle that I observe sometimes on a daily basis with kids having hoods on, hats on, and most of the time it's not done in a defiant way. And sometimes I think kids are putting their hoods up to kind of hide and escape. It's almost like a trauma type of, uh, response. And, and they just need that time to kind of hide themselves for a little bit. Um, what it was, what did you mention? I don't, I'm not finding it in the, the breakdown of the level one, two, three, and four. Is that in that, that chart there?
It is. It's in level one. Let me see if I can pull it up, but it's under the level one. And I believe it's, um, it's actually the first bullet in level one. It says, "Wearing non-medical or non-religious headgear, including the wearing of hoods on the head during school hours, wearing a hood, hat, or other article while participating in remote learning session is not a disciplinary infraction."
Okay. And so prior to this, it was considered, um, a, a level two or three and could have...
It was a level two, but often it would escalate. It would escalate to a level three, which entailed an out-of-school suspension. And, um, you know, it was causing some of our schools who were trying to implement it properly chasing, chasing hoods all day instead of, you know, being able to focus on and chase instruction the way that, um, our associates of school leadership expect. And so what we're saying now, you know, some of our students are doing it as, um, Board President Kotman mentioned, you know, um, maybe changing the term racism to disproportionality. But with Trayvon Martin and the movement that that caused, you know, children are wearing hoods for a number of reasons, some for war, some because that's what they have. We heard from one parent at a meeting and he said, when he was in high school, that's what he had, that's all he had to wear. And so he would show up in school and then immediately, you know, before he could even get to his classroom, you know, be attacked about, you know, wearing a hood. And so, you know, children are wearing them for different reasons and it's only if it is causing some kind of a distraction. And even then, the expectation is that teachers are having restorative conversations in private, not, you know, in a public forum with the child to address whatever the issue is. So there's work that's simultaneous, you know, we're training on the code of conduct addendum. At the same time, we're reinforcing those restorative practices and conversations, tone of voice, you know, how close do you get to a student? When do you talk to a student and all of those kinds of things? So it'll all be kind of together.
Great. Um, one recommendation I have, because this is a very comprehensive document and I feel like it'll, it could be very overwhelming for parents and students. Um, and I know we need to be comprehensive so that we're covering everything. But I would recommend adding some highlights that pertain to the online learning as well as the beginning of in-person learning regarding the mask-wearing, the distancing, um, and putting those into the reopening check-in list that, uh, Ms. Kayla shared with us.
Yeah.
I think that would be very good. I think that would be very good to have those highlighted in that document so that parents and students know right away. My experience so far with students in Kenton, when we take the time to inform them and practice these new procedures, they're doing quite well with it. If we don't and we let them kind of just learn on their own, that's where we're having issues. But if we orient them to this and their parents are fully aware of what's to be expected, we're having good compliance with it so far.
I like that. Thank you.
The last thing, I'm looking at the Level Four and when we're talking about disproportionality. So all of those Level Fours would result in a superintendent's hearing and a long-term suspension beyond five days.
Correct.
So, you know, what strikes me as a concern is, now certainly some fights might require a long-term suspension. I think they probably require a short-term suspension. Something we've been doing in a high school in Kenton is they're given a mandatory five-day suspension, but if they agree to participate in a restorative conference, we shorten that five-day suspension. So I'm kind of surprised to see fighting and some of the minor physical behavior, although it's concerning, resulting in an automatic referral to a superintendent's hearing for a long-term suspension. Additionally, there's a social media violation or threats on there. Now certainly if it's significant enough, I could understand that being a long-term suspension. But something that maybe is bullying, is teasing, to me, that doesn't necessarily, shouldn't necessarily result in a superintendent's hearing and a long-term suspension. And then lastly, or actually two other things, the vaping. If we're kind of taking this, and I'm seeing this in the high school, where students, I think, have become addicted to vaping. And if we're treating this with a response of a long-term suspension, we're not, we're exasperating the problem. And I've seen that in Kenton. Suspensions are not discontinuing the use of vaping in any way. So I would ask that that be reconsidered. I'm not saying that we should ignore it and there shouldn't be any type of consequence, but I would urge that there be a different approach to that than a long-term suspension. The other one was leaving the building and resulting in a long-term suspension. Very similar. You have somebody now that has escaped the building, they've left the building, and essentially what we're doing is giving them a consequence, reinforcing them being out of the building. So that, to me, is counterproductive. Again, something that can't be ignored, but I think we could be maybe a little bit more strategic with another type of consequence for that. One other thing with the COVID-19 violations, there's a few of those listed under there for a long-term suspension. Yet prior to that, you list that if there are continued violations after several interventions of trying to rectify those behaviors, that they could be placed on full remote learning. So I'm wondering, do we need to have that in the Level Four? If that potentially could be an alternative and it's essentially going to replace the instruction that they would be getting in person?
I'll take a look at those. Again, you know, there was a committee that was pretty comprehensive, that took a look at the infractions, some of which were changed. As we know, only the building principal can request a long-term superintendent hearing. So our building principals that served on the committee certainly were, you know, a voice stakeholder in sharing some of, you know, why those showed up in a Level Four, but certainly I can take that back and reconvene and just discuss. I think you brought up some very good points. The whole purpose was to show that we are moving more towards being more restorative and less punitive. So I think you've brought up some good points.
Well, particularly during this time, particularly during this time. And I think most of what Larry suggested were good suggestions to at least take a look at them. I think some things do come down to an individual case, because even the way they're described, if you can have a continuum of that behavior, you know, even within what appears to be not a very serious transgression. So, yeah, I'll put a note in there, Tanja, to take a look at those. And I like the fact that we have all these trainings, let's use them, let's use them. You know, what are restorative practices for? What are healing circles for? What are honest, courageous conversations for if we don't, if we're not going to use them to let kids work things out? I think that's what they want. They want to be heard and they want to have a chance to work it out and maybe have another way of handling something than to feel like it's a strong punishment. Now, certain things on there, you know, I think Larry would agree, you got to go home if it's some of those significant acts of violence or assaults or, you know, sexual crimes and that kind of thing. But I like the idea of trying to see if we can try an intervention first rather than just going through this more severe. It's all part of the equity and, you know, fairness philosophy that we've been talking about for some time now, so good suggestion. Let's do that.
What I would just suggest is, for some middle ground here, is that some of those infractions be at least just considered for a short-term suspension and not automatically listed on there when a principal looks at it and says, oh, they got in a fight, I got to send them away to a superintendent's hearing and they need to be on a long-term suspension.
No, yeah.
I think there should be some, at least some judgment applied to that situation. If two kids are playing football in PE class and they start pushing and shoving, that shouldn't be a long-term suspension in a superintendent's hearing. So, you know, I think we want to provide that opportunity for a principal to look at that document and say, okay, we can utilize or implement a short-term suspension for this one.
Agreed.
Well, and then the idea of bringing back, if you agree, both parties agree to come in for a restorative intervention, then you'll take a look at it that way. I like that idea, too. You know, you may get a three to five because that's what we saw, but we didn't know all of the contextual background of why that person slapped that person so hard. But if you both come in and agree to an intervention or this, what do you call it, restorative circle, family, kids, everyone, then maybe that can be reduced. So, yeah, it's that kind of spirit of it all. So thank you for that feedback, Larry. That was helpful.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scott. What you gave was a lot of solutions and I really appreciate that, you know, advice for the district. I don't see any other hands raised, so I'm going to go ahead and just say that I have a few questions myself. I attended a couple of the meetings for the, for the Code of Conduct along with Dr. Ramona Reynolds. And a few of us been to some community meetings where we have our community partners who aggressively talked about suspensions and any suspensions. They had community members inside of forums that talked about suspensions and, you know, what can we do to stop the suspensions? And some of the things that their children, their grandchildren, or children that they were caring for, went through suspensions and stories that came from the principals, all the way to stories that came from students at these meetings. Now, I'm looking at the Code of Conduct, the 2018, 2019 model, and it talks about why I have a Code of Conduct, what responsibilities of the children, expectations of the students. We talked about if a violation arises and occurred. And through this year, I think it's something we have to learn from this, is that right now, across this country, we're going through an era of expression. And as we talk about expression, we're teaching children, teaching our youth and young adults how to express themselves. Now, as we talk about hoodies, the president talked about equality. These are things that we have to look at and actually believe that as we make the decisions with the Code of Conduct. For one thing, I went to a school where hoodies were worn by students and students were able to walk around with hoodies and walk out of classrooms when they got ready. And it's not a commonality in all schools. It's not going to be practiced in one school. I don't see how this should be a violation in another school if kids are wearing hoodies. We have, we have sports, I don't know, we sell to kids, hoodies, t-shirts, things like that, you know, to represent their schools and the efforts for a school spirit. And, you know, and we shouldn't be looking to constantly violate people when people are expressing themselves. And we conceal that, you know, that form of expression, you know, we're not allowing these children to grow to become who they're going to be, who they want to be, what they're going to become. There's a lot of time we see our students, you know, they take a course in school, in high school, and go to college and take something totally different because their path changes, you know. Their ideal of future changes and their traits and gifts changes also. So with that, their vision changing, I don't want to see us take, you know, our kids' ability to express themselves away. We see a lot of young kids now with tattoos on their bodies, we've seen kids come out and publicly speak now. A lot of kids were down at the marches for the riots. And we need to adapt our Code of Conduct to not to, not to take them rights away from a child or take that mode of expression away, but allow them to express themselves. So, and also, I guess I've got a couple of notes here. We know that there's a stage that comes out when boys like girls and they pick on girls, you know, and I'm going through a situation right now where that's being, you know, brought up to me from a parent. And I'm talking to this kid because I know the kid and, you know, it's a girl who's been picked on by a boy. And so we were talking through that, you know, talking with the parents, but, you know, that's a thing that happens and we know that it's part of relationships building. But we don't want, you know, the person to feel like they have harmony in any sort of way. Another thing is, I know Dr. Tanja Williams, you mentioned that some kids, they still, you know, have his hoodies. I have a hard problem getting my son out of a hoodie. He's seventeen years old, six-five, three hundred and, I think, twenty-five pounds and working out every day and that's all he wears, hoodies. They train in hoodies, they wear hoodies, it's part of their lifestyles. And, you know, he goes into the school, I think over at Bennett, you know, they're a little more cautious, you know, they let kids, you know, be a little more expressive in their mannerism. But what dictates the situation to where if a child wear a hoodie, that is a problem or is it issue? And what dictates the situation that it's okay for that child to wear a hoodie? Is it because he's a good kid, he can wear a hoodie? Or is it because this child had an issue in the past where a teacher or somebody might be afraid or might look at that child different? So I just think there's a couple of things in this, in the dress code, that we have to really look at about our forms of expression. Oh, another thing is about the bullying in the Code of Conduct. What constitutes bullying? And I would like to see more defined means of that in the Code of Conduct. And another thing that was, we talked about suspension a lot. A lot of things we talked about suspension. Our community talks against suspension. Our stakeholders don't want to see children suspended, you know, for a lot of these reasons. We know that, like, we'll state that there is a fight to break out, you know, that demands a suspension, but maybe it demands to sit down the next day and have a restorative circle put together and find out what was the reason for the fight and how can we prevent this in the future? Or can it make up, you know, maybe it's just hearsay, maybe somebody just don't like someone or, you know, it's a numerous reason, but every situation is different. We have to treat every child different. So I don't like to keep hearing the word suspension over and over again. And we can find other means and maybe use our community partners, our mentoring programs to figure out the cause of this and maybe we can meliphie this, you know, our suspensions and try to get that term out and quit using that as such, so openly. I love the professional development that you said that reflects, you know, our teachers and the programs, you know, about moving, you know, to our future values and goals. But I really think that this era of expression, we need to look into it and see, you know, what do the kids say? What do they think? Get their point of views about, you know, about how they feel, how they want to dress and work with the teachers around it. I think we got to start working more with our youth instead of, you know, just set instead of goals and penalizing them.
Okay. Thank you.
Well-stated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Your committee.
Okay. Any more questions? Any more hands raised or? Okay, Dr. Tanja Williams, I would like to thank you for your presentation. It was very thorough. We know that you do a great body of work in your department and that as you look forward for our teachers and goals, that you take everybody's, you know, thoughts and consideration as you prepare these documents as we move forward our district. So once again, thank you and your team for your bodywork. Thank you, Dr. Cash, for his presentation.
Thank you.
As of right now, I conclude the floor. Darren, Dr. Darren Brown.
Darren fell off. He done. And I bless him. Now, what we want to do is go to
I'm on the phone with Board President. I apologize. I'm on the phone with Board President Kotman. We're trying to figure out the next meeting because of the time.
I feel you. Now, listen, I think we should do the fiscal update from Jeff, but it's up to you, colleagues, if you still want to do Title One. That's a pretty involved presentation. We could do it another time. If you want to do it tonight, we can do it tonight. I'm just trying to give you an option in here. I think we just won Michigan and I'm trying to get on to another thing.
We won Michigan a long time ago.
We did win Michigan.
Well.
Yeah, two sixty-four.
Yeah, we're close. But colleagues, it's your pleasure. Jamie's here. She's always well-prepared. Jamie, what do you think? Is your presentation twenty minutes like I asked you or is it twenty-two hours and twenty minutes?
I'm notorious for talking fast, so, I mean, I can get through it. It depends on how many questions there are. I can do twenty minutes, it can be do twenty minutes, but it depends on questions, so.
Whatever the board wants. Clincher, if I may, Dr. Cash?
Yes, sir.
Of course, Jamie can present as, you know, quickly as we need, but because Title One is very detailed and I believe Jamie has a slide for each of the title programs, correct? Jamie, Title One, Two-Age, Title Three. And we also sent to the board the school-by-school Title One staffing and there was another Excel document. So with it being a robust presentation, and Jamie spent a lot of time on it, we may want to take it to the December work session where we have more time. Now, there is a shorter five-minute fiscal update that Jeff can give for financing ops and we can end the evening with that and move Title One to December. That would be my recommendation to the board.
How do you feel about that, Paulette Woods, Board Member Woods?
Well, I do think that grants are a very important topic. It's a hundred and thirty-eight million dollar area and I would rather move it so that it's not rushed. I think everyone is exhausted and tired. But I agree that we do need, I went to the New York State Association of Counties seminar and they said, "We, as a board, must continually at every meeting, update our fiscal situation and make the public aware that we still have a problem here with this twenty percent withholding, that we have a problem with the additional expenses from COVID. So we need to make the public aware of our financial situation." So Jeff, I thank you for being prepared and being willing to give us that update. Wouldn't mind speaking on this one other thing about the situation with a cash flow situation with the city of Buffalo. You sent me something that seemed to indicate that from December to May, they're going to be using our money. So I think those two issues are more, you know, can be covered briefly. You agree, Dr. Cash and Board President?
It was because of the substance of what Jamie has to present. I just think it needs to be a focus. I'm happy to do it under my report at the board meeting if that was something you wondered sooner. But I just think tonight, in courtesy to her, that we're going to start losing, you know, focus. We've been at this for four hours already and then, of course, And then, of course, most of us worked all day as well to get ready for this. So it's just a courtesy issue to
Well, Jamie looks fresh. She's the only one that looks fresh.
She's always, she's professional. She's prepared, so.
Teasing. Dr. Cash, do you think you could find time as a part of your update?
Sure.
Too much? Or does it really need its own? It may be a lot of questions. I don't want to really
I think it should be at home, to be honest with you. And I don't think, I don't think the time of another month is going to really change the substance of what's included here. You know what I mean? It'll largely be whatever she was going to do tonight. So I just think it can, in this particular case, it can wait. The fiscal update and things like that, getting ready for school, reopening possibly, that, those are things that we needed to do tonight. So that's my suggestion.
I second that.
No problem. Paulette, are you in agreement with that? That's good for you. Okay, you don't have
Fine with me. That's fine with me.
Okay. Jamie, my apologies. Get some rest, and we'll do it again next time.
Thank you for being prepared, Jamie, and ready to go.
Hey, you know what? I'd rather have, I don't want to put anyone to sleep tonight. That's totally fine.
Thank you.
Somebody need to make a motion? You know, we just agree.
Oh. Do you want to take a quick vote or does Paulette, what did you say, Terrence?
Does somebody need to make a motion, or do we all disagree?
No, this is not a meeting. This is a committee meeting. Can you proceed?
Paulette, like Sharon said, you know, she asked Paulette, so.
Jeff, can you proceed, Dr. Cash?
Yeah, I can have a brief update on both those topics. Jeff, is Mike Lucci have your presentation?
He does, and I was just going to ask if he could put it up.
Okay. Jeff is prepared, as always, so without any major introduction, Mr. Pritchard will take you through his slide and also answer the question about the city and our finances. Mr. Pritchard.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Cash. Good evening, board members. I just have a one, well, Mike, can you just skip past this slide to the next one? One slide tonight, just to give the board an update of our fiscal picture. And, you know, essentially, the first thing I want to point out is that we did release the report. I sent that out to the board last week. And we also submit those at a regular board meeting. So you'll, you know, if you haven't reviewed that document yet, you'll also see it on the November eighteenth board meeting. The quarterly reports get combined together with the city's quarterly report, and they go to the control board, one of the things that we have to do for the control board. So it gives us each quarter an opportunity to kind of assess where we are versus our overall budget and then try to project out as best we can for the full year. So just to recap, the general fund budget that we adopted this year had a fifty million dollar deficit, meaning that we utilized funds, we utilized fund balance, and then carryover funds from the prior year to, you know, to create a budget for the 2021 year that is a fifty million dollar deficit. At the end of the first quarter, I've got essentially a range now of where I think we're going to end the year. And the range is that we'll either have a deficit of thirty-five million at the low end, the positive end, or it could be as bad as a hundred and ninety-two point one million dollar deficit at the high end. So that improvement from fifty million to thirty-five essentially has to do with transportation. So because district schools have been, we've been remote for the first two months, I'm using a rough estimate based on some information from transportation on what our transportation costs would be, assuming that we actually started a hybrid model in November. So two months of the district schools being closed and then some form of a hybrid model in November. And that would come up to about a sixteen million dollar savings in transportation. So that's primarily why I have, you know, that change from fifty million to thirty-five at that point. In this low end, I do not have any state aid cut. So at this point, that thirty-five million makes the assumption that we do not lose any additional state aid. The high end includes essentially that twenty percent reduction from the state. So the state has been, they've not, they've not come up with their plan yet of how they're going to address the shortfall in aid at the state level. But they've conveyed, going back several months now, that a twenty percent reduction in aid to localities and school districts might be what they have to do. Twenty percent, twenty percent state aid reduction would hit our general fund by a hundred and forty-seven point six million. And then it would also, in state grants, drop state grants by about nine point five million. So I'm including both of those numbers together as a potential reduction in the general fund because at this point, any of those reductions in grants, they haven't made reductions to grants. What they've done is the state has been withholding funds. So they may, they may just withhold amounts that they would reimburse us on these grants. So essentially, that gets us to that hundred and ninety-two point one million dollar deficit sort of at a worst-case scenario. Hopefully, it is not that bad. But we'll find out in the coming, in the coming months. You know, the result of the presidential election will obviously have some implications on what type of stimulus package might be forthcoming in the following few months or early into the next year. And I think that New York State is in large part waiting for that. So we've got a very big range, and it's, these are similar numbers. Most of this, aside from that, you know, that savings projected in the transportation, these numbers I've already presented to you, so these are not major changes. I also have in here, just in, you'll see this in the quarterly report, we have through, either we've spent it already or we have encumbered funds roughly about nine point, or one point nine million related to COVID-19. So that includes PPE-related costs, cleaning supplies, related equipment, and things like that. So that's roughly the amount that we've put on our book so far, based on things. You know, and you'll probably recall from the last board meeting, there were several items that were for cleaning supplies, various things like that. So we've created a project code in our budget this year to track these things. That way, we can hopefully claim some of these things through FEMA for reimbursement. So one point nine million we have as our projected actual cost and encumbrance. That number will likely change. It will likely grow, obviously, as time goes on. But that's what we have at this point. Last point to make here, and I did include this in the last presentation I did, but the state has released, the large payment that we get in September is lottery aid. So lottery aid is how the state funds some of their state aid to school districts. And the state did release the entire scheduled amount for about fifty-one point two million dollars. So that amount being released had no withholdings at all. But reviewing documentation from the state, that doesn't necessarily mean that that the total amount of state aid still couldn't be reduced twenty percent. The state may still look at our total aid for the year and could reduce it twenty percent, even though they've already paid us a hundred percent of that September payment. So they would have to take more out of another payment. So essentially, that gives us kind of a recap of where we are. I think the next biggest thing that we have forthcoming is any additional updates at the state level. That's going to dictate what our revenue picture is going to look like. And then we'll have, unless there's, unless there's something major in January is when we'll do our next projection for the full fiscal year. So by then, we should have a much better idea on our expenditure side. And then we will also have heard from the state too in terms of what, if any, reductions they're going to make. Twenty percent reduction, those are, that's a huge number. And the state, in their four-year projections, are not showing really a restoration. That if they make a reduction, they're not showing restorations in future years, which means that these are recurring cuts that we'll have to absorb for several years. So that's really it for my update, unless there's any questions.
Jeff, the New York State School Board Association really strongly recommended that if a school district is facing this large of a possible cut, that we should kind of let people know that here, we'll get a federal bailout looking at some significant changes, layoffs, et cetera, and that we should let our public be aware. So it isn't a surprise. They can't say we weren't transparent, that they did know that there are implications to this hundred and ninety-two million deficit if the state takes that twenty percent. So that's the reason I wanted you to give the update, so that we can be transparent to our public, BTF and everybody else, that this means we have to have a plan starting here. If we don't get a bailout, there is going to have to be some significant
Well, that's what we've been saying all year, Ms. Woods. And we've been presenting what it would look like almost every month. So we don't disagree with that. And Jeff has shown that it'll look anywhere from seven hundred to eleven hundred personnel. We've shown that in all kinds of different ways. So we'll be as transparent as you want and show you a Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, and all of it. It's a devastating thing. I've been saying for months now that we're going to have a survivable budget, a devastating budget, or an unrecoverable budget. And you start getting into one hundred and ninety-two million dollar deficit in our particular district with no chance to have it come back to us in any shape or form over the next four or five years. That's a darn near unrecoverable budget. So I don't know how to say it any clearer.
And also, Mrs. Woods, all the past presentations that we've done over the last several months, those are posted on the district's finance webpage. So if anyone wants to go out to the finance webpage, you can see September's presentation, October's presentation. I'll also put this one-page update as well. All of those, in each of those, we did lay out, you know, the potential reductions that would be necessary. Obviously, here tonight, we wanted to keep something short just to give a quick recap of any changes. But everything else still holds true. And again, they're all posted out there, so you can kind of follow the progression over the last several months and into the future on all these presentations.
Well, thank you, Jeff, because this presentation at least lets us see that there's a sixteen million dollar savings in transportation, so it's not quite as ugly. But I'm thanking you for making the presentation because that's what the New York State School Board Association said we have to do at every meeting. We have to put this reality out there. So thank you, Dr. Cash, for that. Then move on to the cash flow situation.
Yeah, it's a segue. It's not too much to say about it. I think we presented that as well to you probably last month work session on the, you know, all of the funds are together. And the city, the city has control over those funds through the Treasury Office. Jeff, you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, you know, we do, the district does, and also the city does projections of our cash flow. You know, that's an important aspect of making sure that we have liquidity to pay all of our bills, our payroll, things like that. We included, and this is also in our quarterly report, but we include in, you know, our projections for the full year. When the city's projections and our projections come together, you know, the city of, the city, similar to the last several years, has a lot of their revenue backloaded into June. And this was, we witnessed this last year, where they had negative cash balances for a good portion of the year. And then in June, they get their most significant state aid payment. And then the city also did a borrowing. All of those collectively brought them into a positive cash flow position. That's also what they're projecting this year as well. I can't speak to everything in their budget, unfortunately. That would be something that the city would have to convey. But just looking at that, similar, you know, they're looking at similar projections of probably having negative cash starting in November, December timeframe, and then throughout the rest of the year until the end of the year. They may be in a situation, if there is no federal aid for cities, that they have to do a deficit borrowing or have to make other adjustments to their budget. But again, that's something they have to address, exactly what their plans are.
Jeff, in the projection that you sent me, what it appeared to, from, what it appeared to me is that as of December, it's not going to have any cash. They're going to be using our cash flow that continue until May, using schools' balance, including the point where to be in a deficit situation. We're going to be depleted. We're not going to be able to pay our own payroll or make our own tuition, what you call it? Our charter tuition payments. That's why I asked the question because the fiscal stability authority told the city of Buffalo to go do deficit financing, and they approved them for up to something like a hundred and twenty-two million. Question is simply, would they send us a plan? All of our cash, all of our fund balance, and to put us in a deficit situation to go and borrow from banks rather than plead us? It didn't make any sense to me when I saw that.
Okay, our cash balances, though, you know, what we record as cash, what we record as our fiscal resources to pay our bills do not, at this point, do not show us being negative during this year. Again, the city may have to borrow. They may have to go out and borrow to ensure that we have use of our assets to pay our bills, meaning the Board of Education. And ultimately, that, so that may be something that they have to do. Yes. But we're tracking ours very carefully. And again, look at these projections each month.
Okay, may I ask a question? This up. You given the city formal notification that we will need to use our own money this year?
I'm not sure how to respond to that. The funds that the Board of Education has that we record as cash held with the city, we have the right to use that as the city, we, we have the right to use that as, as needed. That, that's not, those aren't funds that, that the city says, oh, no, you can't pay your bills. They, they've never in any instance conveyed to us that we cannot pay any invoice, that we cannot pay anything. We, we, we have substantial cash resources, when you look at our accounting records, and, and we, we, we can use those funds. There, there is no need to request, I don't, we don't have to request of the city to do that. That, that's implied, and that's, that's under, you know, we have to be able to use these funds for board purpose.
It's, all right, so Paulette, so we can wrap this up. Where are you with the conversations with the controller in regards to the specific items that the board asked for? The, the formal notification that we're going, that they're going to use our money, and when our money is returned back to us, and I think you had some other items that you had put out there. Where are you with those, those requests? Because under, under, under application law 2580, here, this money is supposed to be used for the sole purpose of location. Okay, and I don't want, as a fiduciary or this board, into a situation where we have not done our due diligence in asking for the city to provide us certain, certain guidelines and procedures, because I, I, I'm not going to be in the funny paper behind this mess. It, I'm just not, it's not acceptable, it's not, not, okay? So where are you with that meeting? And where are we, so that we can wrap this up? Refer that to our ad hoc chair. An update?
Sure, just, we, I sent out, there was an initial meeting, I know there was correspondence going back and forth between the comptroller's office and the board. Our last request for an update was met with crickets. I'll follow up to see what's going on.
All right, all we're just trying to do is to make sure that, part, we do our due diligence. My understanding is, is that the city feels that they have the right to use this money, and, and no ifs, ands, or buts. And so Jeff, that's the reason for making it clear that, to the city, that money is going to be, you know, you said originally, I think two meetings ago or whatever, that we were going to run into a situation where we would need our money this year. And I just want to make sure that we don't go into a situation where we go to pull our money, and somehow or another, we don't have it. But if you feel comfortable enough, that we have enough reserves to cover ourselves, then I'm fine. But I do think that we need to make sure, as a board, that the city is on notice, that this is not acceptable. All of us run budgets, all of us have households, and you know and I know that if you're spending money that's not in the bank, hey, that you're going to have a problem, and this has to stop. That's how I feel about it. That's just, that's, that's just Finance 101, okay? So that's where we're at. Irregardless of what the previous histories were, moving forward, we need to make sure we draw some lines in the sand, lets us know what they're doing with our money. Using it, using it is crazy.
And Mrs. Gottman, we do, you know, the, our cash projections, we look at those every couple of weeks. And again, it's, right now, they're, they're based on a reduction from the state, but once the state finally tells us what they're going to, what, if any, and likely they will make reductions to our aid, once they do that, we will recast all of our projections again. Because yes, there, there, there is a chance, depending on how much the state decides they need to cut, that if we, we could be in a position where we need to borrow. And again, we, we, we will do those projections and, and communicate those, you know, as, as soon as we, as soon as we know, as soon as we have this information. The longer the year goes, and, and the more we don't spend, if we don't spend the transportation dollars, you know, those would be more dollars that would, that would, would stay in our reserves. So we, we keep on top of this all the time. This is one of the most important things that we do.
Thank you, thank you. Two hands are up, Paulette, do you see them? We have Terrence Hurd and Jennifer McCusie. Terrence, were you first?
Well, yes, um, yes, thank you, Ms. Woods. I, I think in the bipartisan effort, we should actually have the city present to us, and we should present to the city about our situation, so they can have a clear understanding of, of why we need to utilize our, our funds, you know, so that, working together in unity with the city, I know we have a, a special relationship here. I believe that, I, I believe that in good faith, you know, the city should, you know, our accounts at this time, and look for, you know, the promotion of, of our school district, and as we try to build up what little we have left. So I just think that our committee should really look into presenting to this, to the city during the council meeting, and the council should have somebody here to represent, you know, to listen to, you know, our endeavors also, along with sending out formal information I rest there.
So, just for clarity, we, we actually do have some people that are still listening, so I want to ask Lou, if you can help me out here. The controller, the conversation with the controller is, you folks are going to be the ones to lay down kind of the law for the city, so that we don't have to do this guessing going, going back and forth. Like, I don't like to be waiting on a situation where we know that our state government's going to give us a hard time, and we know that the city is also in a, in a bind. So if we're going to be in a possibility where we have to borrow, and we got to go through this back and forth, and there's this wall of, this is how it always was, like, I don't, I don't want to deal with that. So comptroller that puts the smackdown on, look, this is how this is going to go, and you have to make sure this is in place, is this guessing game, and Jeff, you always having to be on top of it, I'm hoping you're on top of it, as opposed to people just doing the right thing, and telling us whether or not they're going to be needing our money, what the, what the checks and balances is going to look like, how they're going to pay it back, and what are we going to do if we end up needing our money? Like, this, the, the whole key point in here is our money for our students, like the future of the system. I'm really kind of getting upset with this back and forth for the past three months around why this is happening. Where is the checks and balances? I want to know who sets the law, who puts the line in the sand? We keep saying it needs to be done. I, you know, nine-year-olds can tell us it needs to be done, but where is it, and how is it going to be done? And is it in the comptroller's hand? Like, we got to put pressure on whoever it is to make this real, because we don't have, we can't play around. We just went through four hours of how much this pandemic and all these issues are affecting our district and our students, and every penny counts. So enough with this back and forth of how we're going to, you know, we're supposed to be working in unity with the city, and this is a huge divide, and it's really starting to make me almost say things publicly that shouldn't be said.
So, Jen, I love it, I'll take the question from here. Yeah, I'm trying not to say things I would prefer not to say here right now also. A lot of this has to do with the fact that, A, we are a dependent school district, we are not an independent school district. The money doesn't come directly to us, the money comes to the city. There's part of it also. Part of it also is that that money, we all speak about fiduciary responsibility, that money is specifically allocated for the district, and the district has to be able to use it to spend it, yes, that's, that's clear, that's clear cut. The city cannot just take our money and spend it on something else. There is no question, that has never happened, they cannot do that. It's, it's impossible, they just can't. In terms of the clarity with respect to the funds and the accounts, there, there seems to be this, this narrative that I keep hearing about, yes, the funds come to the city of Buffalo for the Board of Education. Under the city charter, the Board of Education is a separate dependent group. We are not an independent school board, so that's something people have to understand. We are a dependent school board, we are dependent of the city of Buffalo, we are a subgroup, we are an agency of, we are not independent, so I keep saying that. That money has to come, there, there is no way the city can just take that money and say, oh, we spend it, you can't have it, it doesn't work that way. A lot of it, though, is just so everyone's aware also, that every month, or the comptroller's office puts out a report that shows all the various accounts, and where the money's going, and it's on their, their open web portal, it's, it's out there, there's no skullduggery, there's nothing going on, that they don't say, hey, we, oh, by the way, we took your money. What we're trying to do is to get some notification and clarity in, in a method or a procedure or a vehicle that's easier for everyone to understand, so that we are working together, as Terrence said, so that we all are on the same page, because our finances are interconnected. And because of that, we've asked the comptrollers off, say, hey, just give us some notice, let us know you're going to do that, so that I don't have to read about it in the newspapers, because I like sharing, don't want to be in the funny papers. I would like that heads up to say, hey, you know, we reached that point in our budget, because you have to remember, payments that go to the Buffalo Board of Education for our purposes, and the way the city is paid are in two different schedules. So you've got two different schedules of payments that are going out at the same time, and that's where the kind of money and banking and cash flow gets a little bit more complicated. But that money is there, it will always be there, it cannot be used for other purposes. Does the city use, does, has it been used for a short-term, short-term purposes, so they didn't have to go to get a, you know, they didn't have to get some short-term, you know, revenue anticipation note, or revenue anticipation product, whatever it may be? Yeah, they have. But if they take that money and they don't, and if they use that money for that purpose, or it can't be reimbursed, then, then they've committed a crime, and they cannot do that. To quell all this discussion, because it has been going on for a long time, Jen, is that we just wanted some clarity on the method. How's this happen, once it happened? Please let us know, because we've consistently read articles, we've consistently seen news stories where the city is using the boards, and how do we find out about it? Even though it's in the comptroller's report that goes out every month, if we don't read those comptroller's report, as I'm sure many of us do not, we would not know. So what we're asking is, give us a heads up, give us the clarity, let us know to dispel all these, all these, all these things that are out there, that would say, hey, we're using this money, we're, the dollars are coming in, it will be repaid by date certain, and then we're good. We, we thought this would be a nice way to put an end to this, to put clarity on the matter. For whatever reason, you know, and I imagine because of the budgets, and some of the things, some of the difficulties that all budgets, state, federal, local are having, that, that we were placed on the back burner. I hate to speak for the comptroller's office, because until recently, we had a nice series of exchanges, things were going well. I will follow up with, with Barbara, with Comptroller Miller Williams tomorrow, to find out where things are going, because it is, from demonstrated by this discussion and the attention to the matter, this is a priority for the board.
Thank you, Lou. I think I've had more clarity with you than, you know, and Jeff, you, you try so hard, and sometimes I, I just, you know, I, I appreciate it, I appreciate it, but people are, they read about it in the paper, and then we're stuck trying to figure out how to explain it. And I'm on the committee that deals with this, and I'm still unsure, so I appreciate that, Lou.
I don't see any other, I don't, I don't see any other hands up. But the main thing is, we do want to get it to a place where city of Buffalo is asking our permission to use our money, because that's what the law requires, and that we are in control of our finances. And if at all possible, there could be some revenue, interest-earning revenue, go over to the Buffalo Public Schools, so we could use it to enhance our children's education. I am hoping that the selection results that we're all anxious to get out to see helps us, so that maybe there will be a bailout coming for all of the states, rather than states being punitively punished. So that's, uh, that's all I have to say. Does anybody else want to ask any questions? Or Jeff, superintendent, anything else you want to say on this matter?
No, I, I just think, you know, everybody's going through a tough fiscal time. This is the city, and the city supersedes the school district, as far as all of the citizens are concerned. So we've been trying to be helpful while we can, but we're, we're getting to a point where we certainly got, we, we have to be made whole each and every year. And so I think the idea of having a joint meeting or a joint presentation is a good one, and let's, let's do that, let's do that, move forward and do that. And I will say, colleagues, you know, I, I hope, I hope it doesn't happen in our, in our service, but it could be a time when the city has, has, has more revenue than it, than it would normally have, for whatever reason, and, and we, we have to borrow their money to keep cash flow going for a particular year. I hear historically that, that has happened before, it's just that it's on the other foot right now. So I don't know, I just think we, we look into it, be transparent, and, and most of this will work out. What I am, what I do know is they're not using our money behind our back, like Lou said, or, or misusing our money. We, that the funds are supposed to be independently used for schoolchildren and for our children. And I, I guess I just have to trust right now, and I'd like to be able to trust our city counterparts to, to believe that that is the case.
Karen, do you have a question?
Yes, I, I know that we, today, we are talking about cutbacks, or, or people losing positions, and following the pathway from other states, and, and working in the state of Georgia, I, I think people are more happy, more apt to take furloughs than, than to lose positions. And, and I know that we talk about it's coming, and we know that it's coming, about positions and making decisions. So I, I think that we will probably need another meeting to discuss, you know, that, that topic, and, and how we move forward with that, besides what the city does, or, or what the projection would be with our financial situation. We really need to, you know, talk about, you know, what's next steps will be, A, B, C, and D, like you said, and moving forward.
Can I interject something here? So that would come from the superintendent, and, and Jeff would determine that at that point, it was necessary to move forward with that action with the board. What we do not want to do is cause a fear, fright amongst anyone. We're not at that point, and we don't have to have that discussion. If it comes to that point, it will depend on the superintendent and Jeff to call a meeting or to let the board know what we have to do. Other than that, we're not having that discussion, it's not going out on the, in the news that Buffalo Public Schools is considering layoffs and all that, we're just not doing it. That would just cause too much fright. We have to remember, we are one of the biggest employers in this, I mean, in this city, and we're not going to at that stage at this point, okay?
It was one of the things that was discussed earlier.
And, 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 I mean, Pritchett, to come forward and tell us that we're at that point, okay? That's what they get the butt.
It was one of the things that was discussed earlier, Madam President, about the projected future.
He gave you that.
A lot of things we can do before, you know, we look at.
Gave you that, he gave you that two meetings ago. Matter of fact, I think he gave it to us twice already, those projections, already. So it's not anything that's hidden, is, is that you have to be very careful about what you put out in the media, okay? Not the case here at this point. We're still sitting on a healthy reserve, the, the fiscal responsibility has been exercising its district in a, in a very prudent way, and we're standing in better shape than a lot of our sister districts. So the last thing I want to do is to ever cause that type of fright to go out there amongst anyone. That's not necessary at this point.
Well, I think that's, I think that's right, in terms of that, that approach. That's why we haven't done anything yet. We've, we've really, really been trying to go as long as we can, colleagues, hoping for the election to, to, to possibly help us. But we are getting to a point where we go into the yellow, and then we're going to be into the red zone pretty quickly. So it's not like an on and on, and way into May and April. This is, this is going to come to yellow in December, and then it's going to be into the red zone pretty quickly into the, into the beginning of, of the new year. So I just want to be clear about that. We, we've employed a lot of people, we haven't fried Chicken Little, we, people are still getting their paychecks every week and their benefits, and, you know, while, while you want to do that, you also want to let them know. Be accountable, do their job, do their job. It's a blessing to be employed right now. And, and they have to understand that part, too. So we're going to try to keep the pain as minimal as possible, that's always our goal. We don't want to hurt anybody.
Well, I don't have anything else for the Finance and Ops Committee, so that ends this. Well, I don't have anything else for the Finance and Ops Committee, so that ends this. Do we need a motion to adjourn?
No, you do not.
Then everybody have a great, great evening. Let's go see if we get a, a president that will help us.
There you go.